How are you?
Good.
I haven't seen you in ages.
I know. Your hair is kind of one of the same hair colors.
You know what, this is a lot cheaper.
No, he got a haircut today. He can do like her own hair. She's been on vacation for weeks and... Well, she said for a long time since she got her haircut. When was the last time you came? She said two months ago.
Oh, wow.
And it was like, you didn't have to check.
You were looking like sixties.
Really, I was at that point with... Are you doing well?
Not the sixties.
No, 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 I know, I know. So I made...
My jeans, yeah, mid-century. He calls that mid-century. I'm like, I didn't really like jeans. I didn't like jeans and then I grew up, it was like when I was born. It was more than... Oh, it was...
Think about the colors of that. The yellows, the greens.
Oh, the anodals and all. Hearts, or gold, that's from...
And the color of...
Yes, yes, yes.
You just...
Do you want to... My sister's...
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome, council, welcome. I got to call to order this special city council meeting on Monday, September 22, 2025, at 7:01 PM. A special city council meeting requires a supermajority. That means four out of five must be present, but all council members are present. So quorum is assembled. Oh, I was all geared up for an invocation. It's not on here. But you know what? I'm going to offer one. We can say the Pledge of Allegiance is on top of it. Thank you, Holy Father. I want to acknowledge the Charlie Kirk memorial service this weekend, yesterday as a matter of fact. It was quite significant. We saw the President of the United States, Vice President, all his senior cabinet members and other members of our government in attendance. There were over 70,000 in person in attendance. And I saw reports today, there was over 100 million streaming that event. If we could turn that phone off, please? Thank you. And what I've seen, what I think we all have, it is a call for introspection. What are we doing? What are our thoughts? What are our feelings? What are our motivations? There were over 70,000 in person in attendance. Excuse me. And I saw reports today, there was over 100 million streaming. Who is this? What is, what's going on here? Who's that? Holy Spirit. Anyway, is that... I want to acknowledge that. I ask Almighty Father to guide us in that introspection of ourselves as our, as a nation, as a state, as a county, as a city, and guide us in all what we do. In Jesus' name I pray, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
On here, item two, says participation and comments. Do we have anybody who would like to make comments?
Comments I have all are for specific agenda items.
Very good. Do we have anybody online who'd like to make a comment to the city council? Very good. Item three, public hearings, ordinances, resolutions. Three A is discuss, consider, and act on an amendment to the job description of the city administrator by establishing a salary, required qualifications, and all other components necessary for the job to be posted in accordance with the city's personnel policies, and directing the finance director or her designate to post the amended job description for city administrator in accordance with the city's personnel policies on September the 24th. And... Councilman Gilbert, I understand that you have got these job descriptions written out. Do we have any, is that available for posting on... Is it available that we can get it on the screen?
I don't have it in PDF form. And it was not part of the agenda packet.
Okay, the electronic version was not posted.
Would you like for me to send it to Marcy?
Excuse me. I'll go over briefly. And it says desired education and training, bachelor's degree in public administration, business administration, management, public policy, finance, urban planning, or a closely related field, master's degree preferred, MPA, MBA, or similar, especially for larger or growing cities. Certification credentials are a plus, i.e., TCM, a membership preferred. I think that is Texas City Municipal... Texas City Manager Association, that's what that stands for, is preferred. Certified public manager, and any special certifications relevant to utilities, planning, public works, or finance experience. At least 10 to 15 years of progressively responsible municipal government experience, with a minimum of five years in a senior management or executive role, such as assistant city manager, department director, or equivalent. Experience in leadership executive and executive roles, department head, assistant city manager, deputy, et cetera. Budget development and finance management, including capital budgets, experience. Experience with infrastructure, public works, utilities, planning, and regulatory compliance issues. Experience in economic development, land use, zoning, growth management is very helpful, especially if Hazlet is growing. Experience with community engagement and management relationships with elected officials, board commissions, other stakeholders. Skills and abilities. Strong leadership with the ability to motivate staff, delegate, and foster a positive organizational culture. Excellent communication, oral, written, public speaking, both within government and with public. Ability to develop and implement strategy, long-term plans, and set priorities. Fiscal discipline, fiscal discipline, and good financial oversight. Problem solving and decision-making, especially in complex or ambiguous situations. Understanding of Texas laws, municipal codes, open government requirements. Examples, Open Meetings Act, Public Information Act, land use laws. Interpersonal diplomatic skills, ability to collaborate with council staff, community, business. Integrity, ethical conduct, transparency. Track record of working successfully with elected officials, community members, and regional partners. Other factors and preferences. Knowledge of small to mid-sized cities, especially in North Texas slash DFW Metroplex context. Experience dealing with utilities, water, sewer, roads, development review, permitting, et cetera. Familiarity with growth management, annexations, capital improvement planning. Ability to manage multiple priorities, adapt to changing conditions. Comfortable with experience, comfortable with or experience in public-facing community outreach roles. Valid Texas driver's license. Residency within the city of Hazlet is not required by law, but may be considered desirable by the city council. And that was the whole of that. Councilman, any comments?
I believe it was one or two city council meetings ago, somebody in the audience recommended that, or not recommended, but voiced that we did not have any qualifications. And I believe it was one or two meetings ago, we were just voting on this. It was not, it was about the job description, not about the qualifications. And so, once this was approved, we wanted to come in and talk about the qualifications that will be listed for the, in the job posting, and let everybody know what the qualifications and everything would be. And I apologize, I did not, I was working on this this weekend, and I did not get it to, in time to get up on the screen. With all these job qualifications and everything that we have listed here, this will be able to have very qualified people that have a lot of, many years of experience with all different types of cities, small or large cities, larger cities, that can come in and have work with their expertise on working with our city officials and developers and different people. And so, they're just the qualifications that we have listed out, so.
Very good. Is there any discussion?
Excuse me. Very good. Is there any discussion?
Mayor Halsey, I'd like to say something. Go ahead, go ahead. Just wanted to reiterate kind of what Councilman Gilbert was saying. This is a really, really well put together list of requirements that I think if we can check these boxes, will put somebody of a very substantial and experienced background in a position that they can really help us truly set the foundation for the city going forward and as the growth truly kicks in. And not just the growth of Hazlet, which is growing, but the growth that is their immediate border in Fort Worth and those two massive neighborhoods that are coming. You know, we really need to start preparing and looking, you know, aptly to the future of how it works. So I think these are a great list of requirements for the position. I think that they should, you know, produce something that will be beneficial for the city.
Mayor Halsey?
Yes.
So my question, I guess, is to our three A. So this, if, once this is, or if this is approved, it'll be posted on September 24?
That's what this item states.
Okay, just checking that. And if there's, if there's things that we want to add to this, is now the time to make, you know, to discuss the possible additions? I know one thing that wasn't on here that I would like to have, attends all city council meetings, except when excused by the city council. I talked about that.
So that would be inclusive of a motion that's made, if one's made?
Right, okay. I would add that too. And then I've implemented the policies adopted by elected officials. This person, he or she would work for the city council.
I'm sorry, I didn't understand. I'm trying to write this down.
Okay. I said, as well as implements the policies adopted by elected officials, because this position, he or she would report to the city council and the mayor. So I wanted to kind of make sure that was added. And then would we need to put a salary in this motion, or would that come later? How does that work?
So a couple of things. In the previously approved essential functions of the position, it does mention, require that the city administrator would attend and participate in all council meetings. So I don't think that would be something that we would need to add to these qualifications, anything that's already in the essential functions. Likewise, your second point about directing, I guess, say again.
Right, okay, since it's already in there, it doesn't have to be...
Yes, the essential functions were already adopted in that 20, ordinance number 016, 2025. So this is just to add on to that, the experience, desired education, everything else that Councilmember Gilbert laid out. Something that is missing here is a salary. And so if that is something that y'all want to establish tonight, so that would be included in the posting, tonight would be the time to do that.
So as I understand, so this is not all-inclusive. This is to add to what was already submitted in job duties?
For the, yeah, for the job description, it would be, it would include both the essential functions that were listed in the previously adopted ordinance, plus whatever else they want to add tonight as part of the job functions.
So this would have, needs to be merged with the prior?
This is not being codified into our ordinances. This is just going to be added on to the job listing when it gets posted later this week.
So both get posted? This gets posted only?
Both, yeah. The essential functions plus everything that gets included here. Everything that's required under our personnel policy for a job posting. And so that is title, salary, nature of the job, required qualifications, whether competition is open to the general public or restricted to city employees, and the application deadline. So that is what's required for new job postings under our personnel policy, so.
So what constitutes the job description? What was previously in the other documents in the codification?
Yes.
All right, and this is, this is just kind of job application screening requirements?
Yes.
Yes.
All right.
May I ask a question, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Could we put something about the salary being commensurate with experience so that we can have a little longer to figure out what would be an appropriate salary?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, one question as well?
Yes.
For Mr. Page, would the specifics that you mentioned that we needed to set tonight, does that need to be made in the motion that we make when we set for a motion for this?
So as of now, what Councilmember Gilbert has presented, that would be what would be voted on. And if there's any changes to it, or anything else you'd like to add on that would need to be included in the motion?
Okay, so what you, specifically what you listed in regards to salary and that other listed, I don't, can't, everything you just said, but if you could, you know, maybe we should write that down, so.
Well, it's already in our essential functions of the position.
Okay, so then we just needed to list what the salary will be, which would be contingent on the experience.
So it did, it does say salary commensurate with qualifications and experience on one of the job descriptions and a second one.
That begs the question, how many job scripters do we have?
They're the same. They both have the one through 12, and the minimum qualifications and the preferred skills. This is just, I think, in addition to, is the way I'm reading it.
This is just the qualifications, kind of like a job posting. This is what, the description is what they're doing, their day-to-day things.
Correct.
So Mr. Page, Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
Mr. Page, just for clarification, since there's been a few things back and forth, the material that Councilman Gilbert provided tonight is something that is going to be tied to the job posting that is going to be done on the 24th by the, whoever Ms. Lamb designates as the person to do it. While as the ordinance that is in place for the administrator, those are going to be the actual job duties specific and related to the position itself, which is what Mr. Mayor is referring to, correct?
The Exhibit A to the ordinance.
Okay, thank you, sir. That's, just wanted to get clarity.
I guess I'm not clear. So Mr. Page, why don't you describe to us what's going to happen here?
Okay.
We're going to post something. What gets posted?
Sure. So part of what gets posted is the Exhibit A from ordinance number 016, 2025. That is the essential job, or this is the job description for the position, the city administrator. What that left out were a few items that were typically included in a job posting, and that is what Councilmember Gilbert has included in his information that he's provided us tonight. And so that would be the two items. What Councilmember Gilbert has, has provided us, and Exhibit A, the previously adopted ordinance. So that would, that would make up the job posting, plus anything else that the council would like to add tonight.
I'm going to make a suggestion, is that we, sounds like these for the posting, that we don't have separate postings and confuse any applicant that may be out there, to me it might be, but is that we merge these two and send them back to you for review, and that we consider this again on October 6, when you have everything in one document to be posted.
That would be up to the council.
Right, I feel, I feel that that's not necessary, as both, both pieces of paper, or both the ordinance we currently have and the additional just go together for the job posting.
Ms. Lamb, you'll be one tasked with this if this passes. Are you clear on what to do?
I believe what you're describing is merging the documents is what I hear Attorney Page suggesting we would do. I would imagine I would present it back to Mr. Page to make sure that everything that he's directed is included.
Can we, council, can we agree on that as we go through this process, is assemble that and send it to Mr. Page for his approval?
So we're saying push the 24th by a couple of days? I don't know what Friday is. Oh, just get chairman, okay. And so take off the 24th as a, leave the 24th?
Well, that might rush him. He has a big workload.
That's what I'm saying, the 26th would give two more days, and that way they can get together and make sure that both of the documents match. That's...
It's an important topic.
Right.
I don't, I mean, Mr. Page, we'll speak to you, sir, if you're considering, is your schedule too much for you to be able to review these two documents within two days' time and get it back to us with an answer? Or is that too much for that?
This would be a priority item, obviously, for wanting, if you're going to put a deadline at the 24th. And so if you do the, if you state that it needs to be posted on the 24th, I can do it by the 24th. Again, that would more so probably be Marcy, you know, that would need to have time to actually put together the posting and make sure that it's posted properly. It won't take too long for me to actually review it, because I've already reviewed it. So it would just need to confirm that's the correct items. I think just the, practically speaking, we want to make sure Marcy has enough time.
And then what do we decide about the salary? Are we going to wait and not post that now and do some research on that? Or you're saying see what type of applicants come in before we look at salary? I did some research myself, I don't know.
I believe Councilman Carruthers suggested an experience-based salary, which would probably be the best, so that way we can, you know, evaluate any candidate who has the qualifications that we deem. And then if they have the experience that may deem on the higher side of a salary, then we could discuss that. And if it's somebody on the lower side, then we can discuss that as well. But that way, it doesn't tie us to a set number, and we can, you know, really explore what true candidates we have out there based on what we have. And we can, you know, make that based on the monetary.
I'm good with that.
If you, if you look on TML's website on job postings for postings just like this, they post on there how much the, how much they're paying. So we need to have that on there. Do what?
Well, we could set a range, you know, a salary range of what we're willing to do, and that way you know.
Right, but we have to, we have to put it on TM, we have to put it on.
Right, exactly, yeah, we could set that tonight, a range. I don't think that'd be too much to do.
Okay.
In my opinion, that is at least.
Is that something we do in the executive?
Excuse me, in, in this deliberation, please, you know, really, your comments are, you know, I know it's to each other, but the protocol, and Mr. Page will confirm, is you address the mayor. And that's how, just in that protocol, in light of Robert's rule. So did you, would wish to address the council?
Is this something we could talk about in the executive to have this discussion, or do we continue to do it here?
Well, it's a, oh, I mean, these people out here are paying for it.
Okay.
I wouldn't be embarrassed about it. Yeah. So does someone have a...
Well, Mr. Mayor, ma'am?
Yes, please.
With that being said, sir, can we discuss a range? You know, in, looking at the research in different administrations in cities that are around and nearby, you know, in my opinion, from what I've seen, it seems like a range of 200 to $250,000 a year salary is about what's going to justify, you know, what we need for the amount of work that we expect this person to accomplish. So I don't know what the rest of the council feels, but I think a 2 to 250,000 is a fair range to set. And then like, as Councilman Carruthers said, as the experience of whoever the final applicants might be, we can set a final number. But that way, we know what kind of range we're looking to spend for the city's budget perspective.
When I did research, I didn't look at, I did look at TML, their survey, but I couldn't really find what I was looking for. So I went back and did the, those cities I talked about previously, there were 18, they were between 4,000 and 5,000 population, they had a city administrator, and I found everything between 115 was on the low end to 185 on the high end. So I didn't see anything over 200. I'm not saying that that's not, you know, what I'd be willing to go to, but I saw more, I saw 148, 170, 156, 185. So those are just the numbers that I saw.
Mr. Mayor, one question, if you're certain?
Yes.
Ms. Morrow, just a question, you know, just, I don't know if you've done that due diligence. Usually you're really good at this and such. So in regards to these salaries, you know, did we take into consideration the fact of, you know, considering that Hazlet hasn't had a city administrator in so long, as far as like, kind of what they're going to do coming into the city versus some of these positions might be in already established government and outline and structure that might be in place? So I didn't know if that might play any difference and such.
No, I didn't look in the years and how many, how long they'd been there. So I didn't have that type of information.
It sounds to me, then, maybe we ought to have a professional survey of recommended salary ranges, that who can compare cities of like size and in the environment in which they would work. Otherwise, it... So we've got a big range. So we've got something here from 115 to $250,000.
I think that, Mr. Mayor, I think if we go that low, we're going to get what we pay for, and...
I'm sorry, say it again?
I said, I feel like if we go down to 115, that low, we're going to get what we pay for, and that's not what we need. I mean, to be honest, that's, this person has a lot to do.
Well, I didn't say, I mean, you can have a range. Again, you know, what you're, so, you know, it's, it's going to be to whomever, you know, who makes a motion on this.
Mr. Mayor?
And this, let me give you a further direction here. You know, each of these elements in here, you can make multiple motions on these. You can start out with the salary. You can start out with the job description, or these additional functions here, I don't know what to call them.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Currently, the highest paid employee of Hazlet is who? City Fire Chief?
That would be Ms. Lamb.
Okay. So is it appropriate that the city manager would be paid more than the highest paid employee that's currently on staff?
Well, you're not looking at a city manager.
I'm sorry, city administrator, I apologize, but...
A city administrator, that would all be determined on their skill set and their experience. So it's to say that, should we pay more to somebody than Ms. Lamb, or less? That's not, I don't think, a fair question.
Mayor, I'm Halsey. I feel comfortable with a range of 150 to 200. I just don't want to lock us into if it's, if it's over that amount and we didn't go less. So like I said, Springtown, he's 148, talked to Mr. Miller myself, and extremely smart man, and then the highest that I, a lot of them, their administrative salaries are bunched together, so it just says administrative salary, like 380. I know that includes a bunch of people, so it doesn't just completely draw out the city administrator. But Grozebeck, excuse me, Spring Valley Village was the one I found was the highest at 185. But when I looked, I was only able to find like six. but when I looked, I was only able to find like six, three, four, five, six out of 18.
Why don't we take, you know, we got a number of elements in this item here, so why don't we take them, each element, one at a time? We can begin with salary. I mean, that's one, can someone make a motion on salary?
Mayor Halsey, I'd like to make a comment, if I could.
Yes, please.
Councilwoman Morrow, I think that's a great range. I think 150 to 200 is a great area to be able to give us something that gives us a good range of quality candidates that can come in and review the applications and look at their experience, and have the potential subcommittee review and speak to them and have them going. So I think that's a great range that we could potentially go for, and just in my opinion, that is, of course.
Very good. Councilwoman Morrow, are you making a motion?
Yes, sir, I would like to make a motion.
Mayor, I'm sorry, we do have speakers.
Oh, you do have speakers, whom do you have?
I have three or four in the audience and some to be read.
Who?
I said I have three or four in the audience and some to be read and to the record.
All right, then, who do we have in the audience?
Brian Flaxpart.
And pronounce his last name again? Mr. Flaxpart, if you would approach.
I'll wait.
If you'll go ahead and approach the podium, and you're speaking through the entire item on 3A.
So I don't necessarily have an answer to ask at this time, can I?
What item did you want to speak on, sir?
This and the labor one.
Okay, now's your opportunity to speak on this one, on 3A.
Sure.
If you would state your name and address, please.
Brian Flaxpart, 16 Ashmore Place, speed bumps there. So just looking at the difference between city administrator and a city manager, that's in the reporting, and I don't want to step on the sidelines, but someone mentioned reporting to the council and the mayor, and so who would this individual report to? One question there. The next, we seem to have maybe overspecified the job description there maybe a little bit. That seems like, as you read all those pieces, that was a pretty strong laundry list of capabilities that we're looking for there. So I think those two questions.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker?
Mike Rhodes.
Mr. Rhodes. Name and address, please.
Good evening, Mike Rhodes, 211 Thistle Drive. Appreciate each of you and the job. You know, I've watched the meetings that have been online and have seen the urgency at which the council has sought to basically change the form of leadership that we've had. We previously had city administrator, how many years ago, Mr. Halsey? I know legally you don't have to answer questions, but you're just here. We've had a person in that position in the last 10 years. A lot of the challenges that we have faced in this community with infrastructure, people who work for us who don't even live here, whether they're engineers or planning and zoning reps, they don't have the same vested interests as we do. As a citizen who's going to be sharing the cost of the tax increase of 150 to 250, whatever it is that you're adding unnecessarily, in my opinion, to the taxpayer, along with whatever the previous benefits that you discussed last week for spouses of employees, it's really difficult for me to kind of understand the urgency that you guys are proceeding with this. I mean, you've touched on items that basically allude to what you're wanting and why you're doing it. I shared with one of the members earlier, I always ask, what's the why? Simon Sinek is a great organizational leadership guy, start with why. And it's like, what I keep hearing last meeting, when you voted, and this meeting, is you want somebody who's going to answer to you. That is, that's your words. Yes, in your motion that you're talking about, you can shake your head, Mr. Gil, but that's in your ordinance or your recommendation, that this person, the job description, they answer to the council. You're creating a division, once again, that this community has already lived through, has walked through, walked past, because the council chose not to listen to the citizens of this community. And it's our hope, you know, it's like, you know, Charlie Kirk talked about, when we stop talking, bad things happen. When you go off on your own game plan and your own agenda, which we see playing out once again, it takes us back seven, eight, 10 years ago, where the council was on their own agenda. You know, and I've served with several of you when I was on PMZ for a number of years, and it's like, that's not how you create a collaborative representative body. You are not listening to your citizens. You're off on your own game plan, and who pays for your mistakes? Who pays for the lack of engineering? Who pays for the backdoor bills that gave Amazon and no revenue to us on developers? Where previous managers, mayors had backdoor conversations? You know, John Day Road, that's not, that wasn't even part of Hazlet. But we have now inherited that, and we have more houses that are going to be built there. Who's going to pay for that infrastructure? You talked about the road last week. Who's going to pay for that? It is our hope that you will respectfully consider the input that you receive from the people who are paying your taxes. We care about this place. It's a special place. We don't want to see adversarial conversations occur like they have, and are reigniting. We can talk nice, we can disagree, but if you don't even listen to us, then we will go down the pathway that previously occurred with the previous council, the previous mayor, because that's the democratic way to create change, if those who are representing us no longer represent us. Thank you.
Thank you. Who's our next speaker?
Chris Halsey.
Ms. Halsey?
Chris Halsey, 2003 Highway 156. I have a couple of different comments.
If you could hold that mic up, you have a soft voice and it's difficult to hear.
Is that okay right there?
That's good. That all right?
First, what, first question, the submittal Mr. Gilbert did tonight on the city administrator job description, wouldn't that not supposed to have been submitted with the agenda and made part of public information? Nobody has seen it, nobody. Did all of the council members get a copy of it? Nobody else got it. Is that legal? That's my question. Also, in June, in talking about the city administrator position, our city attorney, Jeremy Page, provided a legal opinion stating, the attorney general of the state of Texas ruled that while the city council may expand on the powers of the mayor, the office of the attorney general has ruled that the governing body may not delegate to another person the power and duties statutorily assigned to the mayor. Texas Attorney General Opinion JCO 544. Accordingly, the Hazlet City Council has no authority to remove or otherwise interfere with the statutorily assigned duties of the mayor. This includes the mayor's role as the chief executive officer of the city. Number two, at the August 4th and August 18th city council meeting, a total of 24 citizens came forward and opposed the city administrator either in person or in writing. Six people supported it. Your citizens do not want this. Number three, Mr. Horak, you expressed more than once disbelief of why so many people came to the council meetings, that the people did not attend the meetings because of the tax rate. That's not it. They came because they do not want a city administrator and do not want $1.5 million added to the budget. Final, Ms. Morrow, you said you researched 18 different cities that had city administrators. My question is, in those cities, who does the city administrator report to? The mayor, as a should, or to the council? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Do we have other speakers? Please go ahead.
This one is from Shanna Cargill, 211 Tamiami Trail. I am for us posting this position and taking steps to keep this moving on the posting of the city administrator position. I have Cynthia Barnes, or Cynthia Fanning, I'm sorry. I am not in favor of hiring a city administrator. She's on Brentwood Estates, 109 Cedar Lane. Mr. Joe Bullard, let it be known and recorded that I oppose the city administrator position that is being forced on the citizens of Hazlet against their wishes and without a vote of the citizens by the city council. This is not what the citizens of Hazlet voted for. We voted for a mayor to be the chief executive officer of our municipality and run our city administration, not a city administrator who reports to the city council. This is from Trinity and Carl Munoz, 109 Brentwood Lane. We regret that we could not attend tonight's emergency meeting. Like many residents, we are busy working to provide for our families while also carrying the burden of the fines and projects this council continues to impose. At the last council meeting I attended, my first, I was deeply disappointed by the lack of professionalism and respect shown. Councilman Watkins' behavior, including winking at a resident, scoffing, laughing, and rolling his eyes while she voiced her concerns, was unbecoming of an elected official. Such conduct is both childish and disrespectful, and has no place in public service. Equally troubling was the fact that only one resident spoke in support of the council and in opposition to the mayor. Following adjournment, that individual appeared to have a close connection with Councilman Watkins, which raises concerns about bias and conflicts of interest. This kind of perception erodes public trust. The financial decisions being made by this council do not reflect the needs of Hazlet residents. Instead, they appear to be motivated by personal or political agendas, often at odds with the mayor rather than by the best interests of the community. These choices burden taxpayers and divide our city. Brentwood is not an HOA, and our residents chose to live here in the sense of community and independence Hazlet once represented. Nitpicking residents while ignoring broader priorities weakens our city rather than strengthen it. We strongly oppose the creation of a city administrator position. Mayor Halsey has more knowledge, experience, and leadership ability than the entire council combined. Adding another administrative layer is unnecessary, costly, and undermines the authority of the elected mayor. It continues on for another item, which I'll read later.
Do we have any other items to be read, or this item?
Not on this item.
Okay, and, all right, do we have anybody online? All right, very good. So, let's go back, and you were going to make a motion?
Mayor Halsey, can I make a motion?
Please.
I would like to make a motion to approve an amendment to the job description of the city administrator by establishing a salary which we will set at a range of 150 to 200,000 preliminarily, depending upon the applicant's experience and qualifications, required qualifications, and all of the components necessary for the job to be posted in accordance with the city personnel policies, and directing the finance director or her designee to post the amended job description for the city administrator in accordance with the city's personnel policies on September 24th.
All right, I need your help as I repeat this. Is, you make a motion to approve the amendment to the job description of city administrator, and you establish a salary range of 150 to 200,000? I assume that's annual?
Yes, sir, annual.
Annual, and that will be dependent upon experience?
Yes, sir.
And?
Experience and qualifications.
Correct, experience and qualifications. And you direct, directing the finance director or her designee to post the amended job description for the city administrator in accordance with the city's personnel policies on September 24th. Is that a correct recitation?
Yes, sir.
Is there a second?
Go ahead.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Did you second?
I will second.
There is a second. Any further discussion?
Yes, Mayor Halsey. I did want to make sure that the job description goes out, says the position will report to the city council and mayor, so that is very clear on our city administrator job description. I also, I mean, it's kind of interesting, because on the 15th, we had, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight citizens speak for the city administrator and two against, and then on the previous meeting, I think that the number was, I believe, 16 to four. So we're getting a lot of good feedback from our citizens, and I personally am taking in all of the information that's presented at the meetings, as well as conversations with neighbors, and I'm not just choosing it for myself.
It sounds as if you would like to amend the motion. Please make your amendments.
No amendment, sir. I was just discussing, I don't have an amendment.
Did you want to amend the motion?
No, sir.
Okay, is there any further discussion? There is no further, there is no further discussion?
Mr. Mayor, from everything that I've read online and I've talked, that does not report to the mayor, it reports to the governing body. And so I don't know if that's something that.
Is that city administrator or city manager? You're correct if it's.
The city manager, city manager or city administrator, the exact same thing, it's just a title.
No, that's not correct.
Yes.
Actually, city manager council, that is a form of government. There are four forms of government, a type A general law, type B general law, type C general law, and the city manager form of government. Those are forms of government. The city administrator is within one of the type A, is within type A, and maybe to some degree B, because it borrows from type A, but type, it's unique to type A, is another That is not changing the form of government. In this case, it is delegating those job responsibilities and duties that are reflective of that of a city manager. And that's what has been expressed here and in other parts of this thing. But what we have is there was a, it sounded like a request to amend the motion. Is there, there is no request to amend the motion?
No, sir. I was just reading what we have in our ordinance currently. We approved at our last meeting, we approved that ordinance.
What is the question?
There's no question. The statement is, we approved the city ordinance, the city administrator ordinance, you asked us to reconsider it, we approved it again, and I'm just reading exactly what it says here. So there's nothing being changed to that. And what we're, I think what I understood, what I saw. And what we're, I think what I understood, what I seconded was our city ordinance married with the information that Councilmember Gilbert brought, adding the additional salary.
Well, let me, I, I have a motion and a second on the floor. I don't understand what, I mean, I don't understand what this discussion point is about.
Mr. Mayor?
So, yes.
Can I call a question?
Question is called. There's a motion and second on the floor, a question is called. All in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous? Thank you, council. Item 3B, discuss, consider, and act to appoint a subcommittee to identify and evaluate candidates for the position of city administrator. I will advise the council, that can only be two members. Three is a quorum and that's not allowable. So it can be only two members on this subcommittee. Does someone have a motion to that?
I make a motion. Well, do we want to see if any volunteers, I guess?
Say it again.
Do we want any volunteers before I make a motion? I don't want, I don't want to assume these, I'll make a motion, I guess if they, if it doesn't pass, then that's fine. I would like to make a motion of a subcommittee consisting of Councilmember Horak and Councilmember Cruthers to serve on the city administrator subcommittee.
Motion is made to appoint Councilmember Horak, Councilmember Cruthers as members of the subcommittee to, and I assume the rest of that is to identify and evaluate candidates for the position of city administrator. Is that?
Yes, sir.
Correct? Okay, motion, I will repeat, is to appoint Mr. Horak, or excuse me, Councilmember Horak, Councilmember Cruthers to subcommittee to identify and evaluate candidates for the position of city administrator. And I would like that you, that further instruction with that is that subcommittee report back to the governing body and that will be in an open session.
Yes, that sounds good.
And so I can add that part to that motion. Does everybody understand? So I'll repeat it in whole, is, motion is made that to appoint Councilmember Horak, Councilmember Cruthers to the, as the subcommittee to identify, evaluate, and evaluate candidates for the position of city administrator and report back to the governing body as a whole in open session on their findings. Is there a second?
Mayor Holsey, I'll second that.
There is a second. Any further discussion? All in favor? I show, please show of hands. There is, you, you can vote for yourself. Yes, you can vote for yourself. Would you hold your hand up? One, two, three, four, five. All right. It's unanimous. Thank you, council. Items 3C, discuss, consider, and act on proposed zoning classification, intended land use for the tract of land situated in MEP and PRR County or Company Survey Abstract Number 1126, Tarrant County, Texas, and being all of the remainder of a called 70.9983 acre tract of land described in deed to Hazlet 78 joint venture as recorded in volume 9052, page 2304, deed records, Tarrant County, Texas. Do you have a presentation?
Yes, sir.
I don't think anybody out here has. No, do you have something on the screen?
This was already bottoms, items I got from the website. They've, they're from previous meetings.
But can we show this on the screen? I want to remind the council, these meetings are not for you. It's for those people out there, the public. That's why we have open meetings. So what we, what we bring forth, we should share.
I agree. The reason we're having this meeting is because these items were asked to be on the agenda and you didn't post them. So that's why we had to call the special meeting. I will do, in the future, I will send something PDF to Ms. White so she can have it linked. I just brought information that was already on our, on our website from a June 22nd meeting just as background information, so.
Do you have?
Copies for everybody? Yes. I think I passed out.
It is to be submitted to the city secretary, acting city secretary.
Yes, I'll scan it in.
As well to the city attorney. Do you have one for each?
Here you go, Mr.. And did you want one too, Marcy? Sorry.
This is all I got. Here, you can have mine.
No, I've got extra in there, let's. It's just background information. This shows where on June 29th, 2022, we acted on a resolution approving the Flying H Property LLC with the more, of not more than 120 acres. And it shows the resolution and it has, if you turn a couple pages, the contract, the, the location, and then the cost, the tract of land. So it's just, it's just informational to have. The second piece was also on June 29th of 2022 where type A and type B were asked to transfer funds. So it just once again shows the ordinance has the cost of 2.6 million coming from, let's see, transfer from 4A and 2.6 million coming from Hassett 2025 project. So I wanted just to have that as just an establish some, some background information. And then the last document is also from, let me make sure I have it right, June 29th of 2022 where type B transferred their funds. And once again, it has the ordinance and it has the, the transfer from type, from 4B of 3.76 million and Hassett 25 project, 3.76 million. So the reason I've had, I've asked this to be on the agenda multiple times is I kind of wanted to know what the, what the intended use. If we were going to wait, I know the Parks Board is putting together a survey to see what the citizens are looking for and also to get the zoning. Because I asked at the last meeting, and Mayor Holsey, you said, you said community facilities and then Mr. Swankie said agricultural. I followed up just asking for a possible map and Mr. Swankie told me it was actually zoned I industrial, PI public institutional, and GC general commercial. So I don't know, does that one piece of land have three different zoning and different sections of it?
Yes.
I've just kind of been wanting some clarification on that, that land.
So the, the public utilities is on our future land use plan. That's what the council approved and desires.
The, the public institutional, you said?
For, I believe that commi, uh, pub, uh, public facilities.
He said it was public institutional and then industrial and then general commercial. I didn't know what part of the area was zoned.
Okay, existing right now.
Correct.
Is public institutional and that is where the Public Works Building is.
Okay.
And then a portion of it is industrial, zone industrial, and then another portion of it near Schoolhouse Road is zoned as general commercial. Okay, that has, that's what the current zoning is.
Right now, okay. And is there any, like, what's the, the plan or what's our, our?
Well, the, as presented to the 3A, 3B and the council at that time.
In 2022?
Is that it was for an agrarian type development with a farmer's market near Schoolhouse Road. It even had a, a YMCA facility and also riding trails throughout the 78 acres as well as having boarding facilities for horses as well as having ultimately probably the last thing that would have occurred is a large arena, a multi-use facility that can be, that would be used by whether the community, it could be rented out for uses by industry or companies, equestrian events, 4H events, so it's a multi-use facility, antique shows, car shows, whatever the case may be. That's what I presented to 4A, 4B and the city council and there is on that program is where 4A and 4B authorized the funding of that project and the council did as well. Because the council had to authorize 4A and 4B expense on that project.
To accept that money.
But that was the basis of it.
So was there going to be more conversation since the YMCA didn't follow through and since the, the other funding wasn't granted of what possible future uses with student, with citizen input? Are we going to come back and talk about it again, especially after we talked about the, the master plan for the parks that was approved?
The, so your question again to me is, is there going to be more?
Are we going to get citizen survey or input on what's going there since a couple of the items are no longer valid?
Well, over the last two years, I've held twice subdivision meetings where I've gone to each subdivision and gave them the same presentations and said, here's what 4A, 4B, city council here is agreed to here. And they were excited about it.
I guess I'm asking for...
So that, I haven't got a formal survey from the citizenry, but much effort has been put out there. I probably, in all to, between the two years, have made, you know, probably 26 different separate meetings.
Right, I guess that...
And getting their input.
That is what I'm asking for, yeah. A very, a very specific data-driven like document that shows what the citizens want.
I don't have a document.
Okay.
I didn't take a, I didn't take a formal survey.
So maybe when the Parks Board comes back with their survey, we might, may be able to make some decisions based on the data.
I have not seen their survey.
I don't know if they've put one out yet. I think their last meeting, they had, they had talked about putting out a survey because it'd been a couple of years.
And then it'll come to the city council for approval.
Right, so, okay. And we can make sure that we see those things on there.
Yes. And, but that was the, the development intent when those funds were asked for and when the city council approved it. Those were the, that was the program as it was expressed in, you know, with regard to the federal grant. That was for a small piece of that whole development, but it was evidently exciting to the Congress. They approved it until the congressional budget revision came and it took out all of community development block grants in the United States and ours was in that category. Nonetheless, did that answer your question?
Yes, I just wanted to keep it on the forefront so we can, you know, talk about. I know it's like this, with the strategic plan, it's a living document that changes with our demographic and when things, things change. So that's, I just wanted to make sure that, one, with the zoning, so it's zoned against three things and then kind of to see what the, the citizens wanted in that space.
Right. Well, the zoning is, I'll say is no urgency, this city, planning and zoning, one, that'd be one board they gotta go through. And two, city council, I mean, there's no, I mean, City of Hassett owns that property. No one's going to build a warehouse on it. And, and so does that address your item, for that item? Do you, any questions, any discussion on that? Yes, sir.
I think I have one or two questions. You brought up about 4H and having stock shows and having a multipurpose arena and that, that sounds like a really cool idea. Have you, have you reached out to Northwest to see if that's something they would be good to have, you know, stock shows here? I don't know where they do have 4H stock shows, FFA. Would that be something they would be interested in, you know, having one here or is that something? There was just an idea that was brought up. I didn't know if we've looked into, asked the school district to kind of...
Very good question, whom I have not reached out to. Well, I have reached out to NISD and the person heading up that program and they have not responded back. The, the folks that run 4H is Texas A&amp;M AgriLife Extension Agents here in Tarrant County. And I've had many over the last three years, meetings with these folks. In fact, I've, with, meetings with all their directors, which is 12, inclusive of their, the director of the entire program. And they are exceedingly excited about the potential of that happening. And they had described how 4H exploded since COVID. And I thought it was quite amazing. Within the last year, I'll note that the 4H has grown so big, it started, you know, there was, Keller had a program and they created a new chapter. Of course, that's state authorized in the 4H program in Hassett, Texas. And it's called Lone Star 4H. And they meet here and I met with them and I asked them where, I said, where do you hold your meetings? Where is, where does that happen? They go, well, we don't have anywhere to have our meetings. I said, you do now, this community center. And they meet every Tuesday, first Tuesday of the month here in the community center. And I have announced it before and I urge all adults to come and look at these young people and the programs they have. They're excellent. But 4H is everything from raising roosters to robotics. It's such an extensive program. On top of that, let me say this while we're on that topic. Texas A&amp;M AgriLife Extension Agents of Tarrant County are excited to help run all of that and give us guidance free of cost. Now, they're not going to provide all the, now, they'll bring the instructors out here, all the curriculum, they'll provide the entire program, but inclusive of that is like health and well-being for all age groups, seniors. They got programs tailored to seniors. They got programs, gardening or landscaping or the finances. It covers every major aspect in life and they all have an expert sitting on Taylor's 200, Taylor Street downtown Fort Worth waiting to come out here. And having a facility such as what we have proposed, like the 2800, this is our one room. This room is approximately 1,000 and 100 square feet usable area here. This facility would be 2,800 square feet. How do we come up with that number? That was in consultation with Texas A&amp;M AgriLife folks. You need to have a facility where we can seat with tables and chairs 100 people. And that's how we came up with that square footage. Now, that's a little bit more than that, but there was, there's been a lot of work. There's a lot of been a community interest throughout there, but that's just on that one piece. But also Texas A&amp;M AgriLife folks are excited about the entire development and the potential that it has for North Texas and the surrounding area. And it happens to be complementary to Hassett, Texas. You know, we got a subdivision called Hugh White. 99% of it is five acres and there's many equestrian enthusiasts, whether it be Western saddle, English saddle, just recreational riding, et cetera, et cetera. The demand is here and oh, we happen to be in the center of the highest horse population in the United States. That's where we are. And this is a, a demand. Facilities like this used to exist in abundance all around us, but it used to be all cattle around us. You know, I had some second graders... I had some second graders asking, what's the biggest change since I've seen, since I moved out here? My wife didn't want to make that comment. And I said, well, we replaced all the cows with people. But all those facilities gave away, but the demand is pent up and is there. Nonetheless, I'm sorry, I'm going left field here. Did that answer your question?
Yes, it did, and I got one or two more. With this equestrian big arena, where is that fund coming from? Because I know those can get very expensive and the, you know, millions. Is that something that...
We're not close to that. That would be about the last thing would happen. But somewhere between city funds and private funds. And so, we haven't, I haven't explored that avenue. That's to be determined. But there are many avenues to pursue on how that is funded. Nothing premature would ever be done.
One last question. With this property, the 78 acres, you mentioned a while ago that it's zoned in different spots. Is there any way to get a survey of that to see how much of that, like what tract that's commercial? If that's like 10 acres, that's commercial? And so, if we had a commercial developer that wanted to put something in right there, it's like a restaurant or something like that, we would know, okay, you have five acres to work with or whatever. Is there any way that we could get a survey that shows the different tracts of land to know how much we have designated to work with?
Well, in the, that's possible. But that would, letting commercial development happen right there where it's at would pretty much kill this thing. So that's, now, all of this, to extend your, kind of where you're going, is, with regard to this, because we talk with other developers and landowners too, and are excited about that because that gives them, here is a unique destination that no other city has. That's one of the things that the Tarrant County Extension Agents Director said, no one has ever thought of this. No one has been any other municipality and done this research and identified where they are. And to do something like this, and I'll go off on with regard to 4H. They said, if you do something like this, the day you approve it and start, you'll find people knocking on your door that will want to build a 4H barn at their cost. Because what they would do is rent stalls out. But that's to be determined. But that just expresses the pent-up demand. That's on top of what NISD does. So now, in talking with other developers, I've had a several, because I'm not beating the drum real loud, but a, several restaurants that would go, if you do something like this, we want to build next to it. Because it gives, it creates a destination for Hasslet, Texas. We don't have a destination right now. And part of, when I sit down and, okay, envisioning, what do we need? Vision's an interesting word. What do I see right now? But what do I see in the future? And all the input from citizens, what they do, their habits, why they move out here, et cetera, plays into all of that. And so, that's been expressed in this project. And that's why, you know, over two years' time, going to every subdivision and meeting with these folks and getting that kind of input. And is, they're excited about it, you know? And they're, you know, first phase, I've, you know, okay, as expressed in the grant, as expressed to Tarrant County AgriLife folks and others, is first phase would be to build this, I'm going to get off of this. The title of Farmer's Market Community Teaching Garden Pavilion was a unique title to the federal grant. It was very unique to that. But in there, it described, okay, well, the other six and a half days a year, I mean, of the week, it'll be used for community facilities, both the pavilion as well as the... And so, that's where, any write-up that you see now, it's always just a, another community center. It's a community center and a pavilion for our residents' use. And other activities that would support and go around that. The, if I'm getting long-winded here, just, thank you, Gary. Did someone say yes out there? Okay, I'm going to stop. Did I answer your question? So there is interest. This creates a destination. Hasslet would be creating a unique destination that doesn't exist in any other city around us. Now, there are some out, but you need to drive three or four or more hours to get to them.
Did you say that you could, you would be totally against having commercial right off Schoolhouse Road, but then having your other stuff in the very back? You said you were against that, that would blow up your whole idea?
I'm not against anything, but I'm saying there are interests to build around there, but not on that. Now, oh, I know where I was going with, across Hasslet Park, across Schoolhouse Road, is 30, 30 something acres. And I think all of y'all have seen this proposal as a commercial center for Hasslet. And in that area, it's, and as we have expressed, we being Mr. Swankie and I and others, we're not, you know, Hasslet's not looking for quantity. We want quality. And it's a very attractive layout. And that gets the eye, has gotten the eye of a number of folks. But, and we describe, oh, our intent is to start out with this. This being this community, our community center and pavilion, that yes, on the weekend, it would be, during certain times of the week, you know, 4H or Texas AgriLife will be conducting classes and things. And on the weekend, Saturday or Sunday, a farmer's market type thing. And they were, that was attractive to them. And the reason being, because it brings in a destination for people out within the community and outside of Hasslet to come and create more foot traffic and vehicular traffic. It's an attraction to them. So, but it starts with the city taking step one. And there was interest, oh, they saw all of this. Well, we can do our development across the street. So, yes, that interest is out there. There's no, no one has proposed, can you, can we build on this property? Well, they know that's kind of a deal killer, the property itself. But there is, recently, we've finished an agreement and actually a land exchange. One of the most important parts of this was getting direct access to Highway 1, or Hasslet Parkway. And that was accomplished a couple of months ago. And now, we have direct access to Hasslet Parkway. This property does. And that is huge because you got this, you got I-35, and then 170. And right off of that is the direct access to this property. That's huge. And they see all of that. And yes, they would like to build out on the perimeter of that stuff. These areas that we have predefined as, we'd like for you to build commercial out here, commercial out here. Well, you know, big thing in everybody's mind is warehouses, you know? Where, you know, you can sell warehousing property at $150, $200,000 or plus every day of the week out here. General Commercial's not going to pay that much. Dang sure Residential can't even come close, can't even get into, talk about it, not at those prices. That's why, you know, property owners. But if there are restaurant facilities, they see the great potential of it. And yes, there is direct interest. But we have to give them, we start out, we recognize and see this. Here is the destination unique to Hasslet, Texas. We're not in competition with anybody. That is the aspect of it. I'm sorry to go long-winded, but I'm just taking the opportunity to express that vision and what we see, not just I. That's it.
Mayor, I have a city, citizen comment on this item?
There's a comment on this item?
Yes, sir.
All right, then. Did you have something else?
No, no, sir, but I think Mr. Horick had a question.
I'll get to that, thank you very much.
Thank you.
You'll need to speak up so I can turn my head. Thank you. Oh, okay, well, I thought you had a comment. I was going to give you preference. Thank you, sir. So, the, we have...
This is a continuation of the previous comment from Shanna Cargill at 211 Tamiami Trail. I also support the redesignation of land from community garden to something that allows more flexibility for the land use.
Very good. There's someone in the audience here who wanted to comment, please. You state your name and the address.
Mike Roach, 211 Thistle. My kids were in Ag and 4H and FFA. And I commend you for considering, you know, this is kind of an extension of the comprehensive development plan of how to use the land that we own. I think it's phenomenal that you're considering a, some type of recreation facility. My kids live in, one of my kids live in Burleson. They have the brick, which is a Burleson Recreation Center. They've got a pool, they've got arts and crafts. Phenomenal facility for the community. But as you think about Northwest ISD, Northwest High School has an Ag facility on their grounds where they hold their annual livestock show in January. But you also have Eaton, you have the new high school. And it would be phenomenal to create a venue that could be, you know, Fort Worth Livestock Show, if you've ever attended that and seen the participation. You've got, we've got Hillwood in our backyard. It would be a phenomenal opportunity to bring all of the schools, as well as Byron Nelson, to this location, which we're centrally located. So I think that's a great consideration. And it would be beneficial for us as a public if we have a map and we can kind of see the outline of, that would have been, that would have been helpful. Thank you.
Are there any others on the, making, requesting? Is anybody online requesting or making comments? All right, then. On this item?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Sandra Smith, 300 Gamble Street. I tried to look up this deed that you referenced, you know, I play around with deeds. And I couldn't find a deed, a current deed, where it was executed to the city in this exact form. This was a 1987 deed. And I believe the deeds that are in place, y'all are not looking at because they were executed to the city and they were in three separate tracts. I followed it at the time. I think that's why you're finding different zoning, because they're in different tracts. You needed to look at the deeds that were executed to the city. I don't think this one was. I actually did an open records request on this at the time, and it was deferred to the Attorney General because they didn't want the citizens to see it at the time. What I find fascinating is, some of you on council advocate for what the park board's doing on surveys and stuff like this. But it seems to me like this item should have been a P and Z on. I don't know why y'all brought it here to a special meeting tonight. And it certainly looks like whoever brought it should have done a little more research because this is not the current deed. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else? Okay, well, let's move on then. Is there any motion to be made here?
Mayor, I had a comment to make.
Yes, sir.
I was trying to be polite, let the citizen speak. So in the first part of this, discuss, consider, act on, propose zoning classifications. Zoning's already there. If you look at our zoning maps, it's already zoned. And I don't, you know, other than looking at possible uses down the road, there's no tax implications right now to the city because the city's not going to pay property taxes on the land they own. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Yeah, so, outside of looking at, you know, potential uses, I think as Councilman Gilbreth mentioned a while ago, I don't know that we're going to, we're not proposing to make any changes to the zoning tonight. I mean, that's, that's my, reading this, that's my understanding. It sounds more like it's just kind of clarification on what it is.
We can bring it on future agenda items, but we can also have presentation material about this. There's no urgency on zoning. The city does not pay any taxes on it. No one's going to come in and plop down a warehouse without the city's approval, the planning and zoning and the city council there. So there's no imminent situation there at all. As a matter of record, I've asked Mr. Swankie probably two and a half years ago, Mr. Swankie, we need to get this whole property designated as community facilities. That gives the city the greatest flexibility to do whatever the governing body does in the future. Now, and in the future, it's community facilities. And so, I'm hoping he's about ready to do, get that before us two and a half years later. So that's something that, yes, that's been requested. And, but there is no, there's nothing that's going to happen because of it. And we do not pay taxes regardless of what the zoning is.
Exactly, okay. No, that's what I, and yeah, any zoning changes that go through, start through the planning and zoning.
Does that answer the council's questions? Can we move on to the next item? All right. Our next item is three D, discuss, consider, and act to approve a resolution in support for the construction of State Highway Spur 170 from Intermodal Parkway to State Highway 170. And as you've seen over the last week. Now, at the last meeting, I have, if you'll bring that up, I have something here to, okay. Now, go ahead and click on that document. Now, here is the resolution that is in discussion there. And if you go to the next item, number one, it's not at the bottom here at all, it's on your drive. On your thumb drive. Okay, scroll down. Now, this was the council meeting, city council meeting agenda of September 15, 2025. Scroll down to, I think, the third page. Okay, this was on the consent agenda. This, a resolution for and support of the construction, this same verbiage is on this item. And that was asked to be removed. And in that discussion, it was motioned and seconded and voted unanimously to take this item to October 6 and give the city staff opportunity to meet with TechDOT to discuss their concerns with, that were being cited in that resolution and come back to the council on that. And so, that is, and that should be disposed of first. And... is, and that should be disposed of first. And, and I saw that, and I'm going, well, the council one here maybe didn't recall that, but it was a unanimous vote in that you voted for it. So are we, and I have a scheduled meeting with TechDOT at their office on the 20, Thursday. In fact, as a matter of fact, it is Thursday.
Mayor Holsey?
Yes.
May I make a clarification, if you don't mind, sir? In that meeting, if I do recollect, the agenda item that was on before this council was a resolution that was written by yourself, sir, that we continued to the next meeting, whereas the resolution before us tonight is a separate resolution presented separately tonight by itself. Whereas in that meeting, the previous one, there was the idea brought up of the updated version of this. However, the updated version, if you remember, sir, the motion failed so quickly and adequately. So then, Councilwoman Morrow made a motion to continue the item ahead, which that item would be the resolution that you yourself put forward, which was also a hyperlink to this, which if you click the link to this, it will not be the same resolution that we have before us tonight. So if you, good, sir, could you please click the link to the highlighted one?
Well, I understand the verbiage is different.
No verbiage, sir. It's going to show us up here tonight which one was before us. Because if that was the resolution, then that's a completely different motion. So this one tonight before us is a completely separate resolution.
No, it is the same motion.
No, no, sir. The verbiage matters.
If the agenda item, excuse me.
The verbiage matters, sir, but look at the link.
The, the verbiage is different, but that was the council's instruction, is to go meet with these folks and come back.
To the resolution presented before the council, which if you collect that link, you will see the resolution presented before the council, sir. The resolution presented before the council is not the same resolution that we present before the council tonight.
What we have is, what is, how does the agenda?
Sir, you have XXX 2025. That could be anything, sir. That is, that is a very generic term.
No, excuse me. Go back to where you were.
For what you are doing.
Go back to where you were, and this says the same thing. Discuss, consider an act to approve...
Okay, sir, please bring up the link, which is the proof to the item of what we're discussing.
No, we're looking at the agenda item.
Sir, that, this is generic representation. XXX 2025 could refer to anything. There's no specific documentation that is specifically mentioned by this, this time right here. What is a true and valid and verifying proof of evidence is the attached link to that item, which if you would please bring up the attached link for that meeting before this council, you will see a completely different resolution that is being presented before the council tonight, sir.
It is a different resolution.
So then they're not the same thing. So what you, was continued on that night is not what is before the council tonight, sir.
Well, thank you for your opinion. Now, is that the agenda item verbiage, discuss, consider an act to approve resolution XXX 2025 in support for the construction of State Highway Spur 170 from Intermodal Parkway to State Highway 170.
Mr. Mayor.
And did you, you went, I'm going back to the previous one. You don't need to go to this. What was, what was on the agenda at the, the number one, item number one? Go back to the top. The, okay, go to the agenda, go back. Is that number two? Okay, here it is. Approval of resolution. That is the form for consent agendas, but otherwise it's discuss, consider an act of resolution XXX 25 in support for the construction of State Highway or State Highway Spur 170 from Intermodal to State Highway 170. What we're looking at is the agenda item, and these are identical.
Mr. Mayor.
I understand what you're saying. Well, the content of the resolution is different. That doesn't determine that there are different agenda items.
Sir, the content of the resolution determines the entire resolution. The content of the resolution of one resolution versus another resolution are entirely different, sir.
No, I understand your argument.
So if, now again, can you please, it still hasn't happened. Can you please bring up the verifying documentation from the previous council meeting, which showed the resolution that was before the council that was continued? Sir, that is a factual piece of evidence that needs to be reviewed by this council before we move forward. So can I please get that pulled up? If you guys can, I can pull it from my phone.
Well, it, is that it right there? Okay.
And Mayor Holsey, that is the, that is the resolution attachment that I did ask to be continued. So, for the October meeting. And I think what we have presented tonight is a different resolution.
Now, that's the old res, that's the former resolution.
Okay, so that's the one I continued. Okay, was the former?
So, Mr. Mayor, tonight I'm introducing a new resolution.
Do you have that for display?
I have it. You, I gave you a copy of it.
Oh, that's why we can't pull it up. It's not available to pull up.
No, sir, I was requesting the one he just pulled up right now. This is your resolution that you presented before the council beforehand.
I and staff.
Councilman Carruthers has presented one tonight, which, you know, he was not able to get to the city secretary.
Mr. Page helped. So it's not just me. The entire staff and legal was involved in drafting this.
Okay, sir. Well, again, you are the CEO until the administrator takes effect. So, sir, you are the boss at the top, so this came from you, as you understand the leader.
I understand. I own it.
So, with that being said, sir, again, this is, again, completely and entirely separate verbiage. And from a legal perspective, as Mr. Page I'm sure can attest, the verbiage in a resolution document is very specific to what that resolution is, sir. And the resolution that was continued on the previous council meeting is not the same verbiage that is presented before this council tonight. And if, I might be wrong, Mr. Page, but if a special council meeting was called tonight, should the resolution that is before us take precedent over anything else?
The item was lawfully noticed, posted, and so there's nothing that would prevent us from discussing it, or you all from discussing it tonight.
Well, I wouldn't try to convince anyone otherwise. I was just recanting what had happened. Is that the resolution, I'm talking about the agenda item as posted, were the same, and that the council voted to give the staff opportunity to meet with TechDOT. Unless, did you meet with TechDOT to draft this? Who drafted this? Who wrote this?
I wrote it.
You wrote it. Did you meet with TechDOT?
No.
You did all this by yourself?
I had a little bit of help.
From who?
From one of my friends.
Who, do they work with TechDOT?
Not directly.
Do they work with COG?
Not directly.
Not directly. They work indirectly with COG and TechDOT. That's interesting. So you won't reveal as you should.
Am I required to reveal who helps me draft something?
Well, you're interacting on behalf of the city count, this governing body, with other entities.
I'm not. I was gathering information.
And gathering information, can you not share?
I'm sharing it right here.
Can you not share who you interacted with?
Point of order, Mayor Holsey?
What's the point of order?
Relevance to your question, sir. Whether or not you deem the source of Councilman Carruthers' resolution is invalid at this point, Councilman Carruthers provided a resolution before this council. Our city attorney has now made it very clear that this has been legally and lawfully presented before this council. So whether you like or dislike the ability of where the source came from, sir, that's not on the docket, and that is no relevance to where we are now.
Well, it has no bearing whether I like it or dislike. I didn't say I disliked anything.
You can't, you can't force Councilman Carruthers to tell you anything.
I didn't, I purely asked him a question.
Continue to protest him is not...
Well, thank you, sir.
Mayor Holsey, is this the same resolution that was presented on September 15th? Has anything changed at all?
Are you asking me?
Well, yes, since you provided it.
I, this is the language that I proposed that we did not amend the previous.
So nothing, this is the exact same?
For clarification, this is the updated literature.
No, what you're seeing on the screen is the original resolution. What we have been provided, provided here in print and is not available to be posted on the screen.
But everyone has a copy.
But it's the same one we, we went over on the 15th, is what I'm asking?
Yes.
It's the same agenda item.
No, not the same agenda. I'm asking if it is the exact same resolution that was presented on the 15th.
No, his, his proposal was a...
And you pulled it from the consent agenda, and then you presented us one, and then it failed, and I continued it. So is this the same one that was presented on the 15th by you?
By me, yes.
Yes, okay, that's all I know. So it's the same one that was, that was...
So this is the same one that was presented on the 15th.
That we...
It was the suggested update.
We tried to update the language.
And why did it pass?
I'm sorry?
Did it pass?
We never got a chance to second it and vote on it.
Why is that?
Because you very quickly said it failed before someone could say it seconded.
Well, there was a, oh, I recall, there was a motion made, and I go, is there a second? No one seconded it. It went quickly. I did look left and right, and no one seconded your motion. So the motion failed on that reason. And that is according to Robert's rule.
I don't think that was his motion. You didn't make that motion, did you?
I did.
Yeah, so he didn't even make the motion. And it was, was pretty quick. I just want to know this is the same document that I've had for over two weeks to review. It's the same one?
So there's nothing different in this meeting as there was on the September 15th. So the motion and second that passed was to move it to October 6th.
Was to move.
To give the city staff time to meet with TechDOT and resolve these things and come back.
Point of order, sir.
What's the point of order?
The one that was, that was tabled was your version of the agenda item.
Yes.
My version was never officially adopted or tabled or anything.
It officially failed. Yes, you did. And if you go back, we can go back and review the meeting.
I did. I went back and watched it. It was really quick. So everything that's in yours could be memorialized in a briefing, and this is just the spirit of a supportive resolution, correct?
And this helps to move it on system.
It's not something, this is just step one of...
And it doesn't obligate us to anything. It just shows our support so that TechDOT can move forward.
Okay, well, I, I would suggest, I understand what you're saying, but...
Mayor Holsey, I'd like to make a motion.
Is that this document, that this verbiage is what was looked at or reviewed and considered September the 15th. To say this is totally different verbiage is not true, but it was considered on the 15th. A motion was made, and no one seconded it. Therefore, according to Robert's rule, and I waited, looked to my left and right, no one seconded it. In that case, the motion failed.
But it can be brought back, correct?
Then it moves on.
It can be brought back.
Thank you for clarifying that for us, sir, because with you clarifying that it failed, well, then this, you know, request by Councilman Carruthers is a fresh agenda item, and he now has full right to call this agenda item since you just clearly distinguished that it failed before us last time.
Well, I appreciate you being able to...
Mayor Holsey, I'd like to make a motion, sir.
I appreciate you trying to explain Robert's rule and agenda and all of that. That's the...
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion, sir.
Watkins' version of Rule of Order, I guess.
Mr. Mayor, just a point of order. I also understand.
What is the point of order?
I understand that on Robert's Rule of Order, if I'm on the winning side of tabling an agenda item, I can actually bring it up at any time in the future.
You're not on the winning side right now.
I voted to table it.
You didn't, it didn't get tabled. The vote was not tabled. The vote was to put this advances to the...
On Mayor Holsey's resolution. We voted to continue.
It is different.
You know what?
So Mayor Holsey, can I make a motion, sir?
Is, yeah, please go ahead and make a motion.
Mayor Holsey, I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution XXX dash 2025 in support for the construction of State Highway Spur 170 from Intermodal Parkway to State Highway 170, sir.
A motion is made to pass a resolution to, let me get that out.
Second.
To the, approve the resolution in support of the construction of State Highway Spur 170 from Intermodal Parkway to State Highway 170. Is there a second?
Second.
There is a second.
Discussion?
Discussion.
Thank you. I understand the motion here. Along with this motion, is it possible, I got the handout from Councilman Carruthers, can we add, I don't know, Jeremy, can we add a, a attachment A and include the resolution that was presented previously at the September 15th? It does provide at least, got a more detailed dialogue on the progress of the 170 discussion. Does that make sense?
Councilmember Horrigan, no, you can include anything you want. If you can, you can ask to amend the motion to include whatever you like.
Okay, that's, and one of my main concerns, and Councilman Carruthers making, pointed out, was, you know, we had the discussion about an on-system or off-system roadway. And I think that's imperative that whatever motion we make, you know, we just, we cannot have this set as an off-system road to where the citizens of Hasslet are tasked with maintaining and repairing five, 10, 15 years down the road. That's my main concern.
Does your, does your proposed, let me ask a question, please. Does your proposed resolution here have the statement that this is a own system, we support an owned system, TechDOT roadway? Is that cited in the resolution?
There at the end, it says Hasslet Parkway, State Highway 170, as a state highway system facility. At the top of the back.
And do we have the exact word, it's own system?
We can amend that. I can amend it to say on, on system. And I also need to amend that the date be updated to today's date. And I would ask to amend the motion to also include a time by which we are to sign this resolution.
That is dictated by the state code. That's independent. That's not anything a council can rule on or include.
Okay, so if we approve it tonight, then how long do we have to sign it?
I have up to four days.
Four days?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
And it would be subject to reconsideration under, under the law, should, should the mayor object to it?
So I move to amend the resolution to include the language on system, highway and bridge and road, and to amend the date to be the day of this meeting.
So the motion is made to move, to amend the motion to include the words on system project. And what else?
And update the date of the resolution to be today.
Oh, that will be done automatically. Uh, what, so the, the resolution would be amendment is to include the verbiage on system.
So do we need a second for that?
Highway. Is there a second to the amendment?
Mayor Holsey, I'll second that.
There's a second.
We got a discussion. Would you, would you, yeah, would you, would you consider adding attachment A to show the previous, you know, proposed resolution, just so we have the documentation on what's transpired over the last...
So Mayor Holsey, Mayor Holsey, I'd like to, I agree that it needs to be memorialized. I think that could be done in just a briefing and a, like an exhibit. I don't think it has to be the actual resolution because that is important information to have. I'm, I'm really glad that Mayor Holsey put all that, all those dates and the timeline there. But I think it can be memorialized in a briefing.
And we appreciate the work that Mayor Holsey has done and the staff, for sure. There's been a lot to this.
And so on system Hasslet has no maintenance moving forward, correct? That's, okay. And my other question was...
I think we have, if we have any questions, I think Mr., I'm sorry, your name, sir? You're from InteCOG, right? And I think you were speaking about this...
Mr. Neal.
Last Wednesday?
And to, and in support of what you're wanting is to memorialize somewhere or another what had been cited in the previous resolution, I think the objection by those concerned being COG and TechDOT is not to give this, because this will go to the Transportation Commission. What had happened, what precipitated all this need was that TechDOT made a mistake... Commission. What had happened, what precipitated all this need was that Tech Dot made a mistake well over a year ago when they filled out the application. And they called this an off-system project of Hasslet, Texas. That was the mistake. They could have corrected that early on, which the staff and I advised Tech Dot to do so over a year ago, which we memorialized in the previous resolution. But it is, I understand it. That resolution has lots of teeth in it. And that is not the kind of resolution that anyone concerned wants to send to the Transportation Commission because they must go to the Transportation Commission. Look, Hasslet is saying they support this as an own system project, not an off-system project.
Mayor Holsley called a vote.
But the aspect is, is that there's nothing in the contract documents that legally bind us to any maintenance qualifications, requirements, none.
Right, so this is...
For anybody to argue or even suggest otherwise is egregious.
So Mayor Holsley, this is just step one, correct, to get it, get the ball rolling a little still?
What I did speak with cog about, I need to further this because since you involved Mr. Neal here, is that we would like to go through this and what we can do to memorialize those things that you see as concerns is that we can execute what is known as a memorandum of agreement.
An MOU is needed later. Right now, I think just memorializing it in a briefing, approving the resolution and moving forward. And then we can go back and obviously TIA's are going to be done, MOUs are going to be done, every other acronym. And then, but this just gets the ball rolling, correct?
Well, yeah, and they have up to 2029 to get the ball rolling.
Okay.
That was stated by Mr. Neal the other night. So there is not the house is on fire urgency right now.
Mayor Holsley?
Yes.
Call the vote, sir. We have a motion on the floor.
We do.
Sir, we have a motion on the floor.
And the vote, there's been a call for the vote amongst to execute that. So a motion has been made and accepted, accepted. And so just refresh to approve this resolution with the amendment that it be cited in there that this is an own system project. That's what's being supported by the City of Hasslet. And I'll call for the vote now. All in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous five-four. Please come up and make your comment.
Mike Croats, 211 Thistle Drive. I'm embarrassed by your behavior, by your conversations. I sat and I listened to the entire session last week when you had the workshop. You tabled this till October to give the city, city staff time to meet, to come to agreement. You openly admit to ex parte conversations acting outside of your role as a public official is a violation of the Open Meetings Act, is it not, Mr. Page? If he's acting, conducting business outside of a publicly called meeting. You don't have to answer me because I know the answer, but it is repulsive to sit here and watch the animus. You guys, you're supposed to be grownups. Act that way. It is embarrassing. I mean, you openly admit, you've had conversations. I don't know if it's with him, but that's a violation of the law. You have no authority unless you're sitting in that seat. You cannot conduct business outside of this publicly called meeting. So when you openly admit you've had a conversation for language, you guys have, you represent us and you're not doing it very well. I was a high school principal for 22 years. I cannot believe how you talk to one another. It's disrespectful. I mean, it's being a bully. And you either own it, it's ridiculous. I'm glad it's, I'm glad it's being videoed.
All right then. I would like to recess for five minutes. That we can use the restroom. So I'll call a recess. It's at eight fifty-four. We will be back here at eight fifty-nine. All right, I would like to bring back into session the open session of the Hasslet City Council this September 22nd. It is eight fifty-nine. All council members are present. And if we could go to item three E, discuss, consider, and act to approve resolution, a resolution to recall resolution zero one two dash twenty twenty-two. This resolution is, I guess that's what's in the PDF. If you would open the PDF up. And so this is the resolution created by the City Council in '22 for, and sent to Tech Dot. Now, if you would go to the information I gave you, council, I need all of you and have not seen the background of how this resolution came about. So it's a brief, very brief history lesson of how this happened. So beginning in November, on November first and the sixth, here, hold on, is that town hall meeting was held and the full-size drawings were, I say full-size, not scale, but large E-size drawings were plotted out, made available to the public on these two different days. And it was like eight hours a day that they could come and view and understand what this six-lane divided project would be and how much it was taking of their property all along 156 up and down and actually the whole breadth of the project. So if you would just scroll down, the issues were, is that the second page? And residential subdivisions, I'll let you read it. I'm not going to spend time on reading everything, but FM 156 had at that time become a, is an industrial truck route. And number two, go ahead, it was an aggressive, and still is an aggressive roadway. And then the concerns for safety, commerce, one of the biggest things is that, as it was, is that it deters our internal commerce. That's the commerce we're interested in is internal to Hasslet because so many people, they get to fight the traffic to get home and from 156. And when they get home, they're going, I'm not getting back out on 156 to go to Joe's Pizza or go anywhere. And that's the problem. That's how it deters our internal commerce and also quality of life. It's an aggressive road to young drivers, middle-aged drivers, and older drivers. So go ahead, next slide. This was the mission statement from Tech Dot. Statewide transportation improvement program introduction, that can be found online. The safety of the traveling public and to the quality of life for all Texans of all ages. This is just in spirit of what Tech Dot said they wanted to do. Deliver a safe, reliable, integrated transportation system that enables the movement of people and goods. That is Tech Dot's mission, is to move it from A to B. They use the term most efficient, but as fast as they can. That's their mission. They're not bad for it, but that's their mission. Their mission is not particularly advocating for quality of life in one town or another. It's just not. It's not part of their mission. Nonetheless, next, that was designed, the six lanes was designed to be a relief for FM 156, to be a relief for I-35. How do we know that? Because we had traffic engineers analyze the data. In those schematic designs, there is traffic counts like you saw in previous meetings, all these traffic counts, these traffic engineers do. And they had theirs as well. Their traffic count only supported four lanes. And asked them about it and they go, well, we want it to be a relief for I-35. That's why we're making it six. And, okay, at least they were forthright about it. Next, is there an alternative to achieve the safety, mobility, and quality of life? Yes. And next, there it is. What we asked Tech Dot to do, and what this resolution that you want to repeal is this. We ask for a four-lane centered, undivided boulevard. That's what was asked for. Next page. Next. We have these authorities cited in the transportation code as a municipality on state highways, even though they go through our city and even though they're a state highway, we have this authority from the Transportation Commission. If you go to the next slide. And that's just getting about altering speed limit. If you go to the next slide, there are other protocol, but I came, you know, we as a staff and I became pretty well versed in the transportation code and making application informing Tech Dot of all of this criteria. Next slide. Next slide. So again, they asked, you know, what this resolution was all about was this. Now, next item, number two. All right, during the course of all of this, petitions were generated by citizens and users of FM 156. Go down to the first page. This particular happens to be a petition for four lanes. Look at the count. The first column, 358 are all Hasslet residents. The second column are other, they're non-residents, but they use FM 156 daily for a total of 674. This is a petition for four lanes. Let's go to the next slide. No, no, next slide. These are, everything following is the actual signature of everybody. If I looked, I might find one of y'all's names on it. So the next one, this is for 35 miles an hour, the speed limit reduction request. Okay, go down to it. Oh, okay, there we are. Okay, again, 291 from Hasslet residents wanted this, want this still. And 210 from others outside of the City of Hasslet for a total of 501. Go to the next item. All right, there. Now, over the course of time, this got started in '21. So here we're about 10 months later. And all of that petition, all of that was forwarded to the Transportation Director of Fort Worth District, Tech Dot. Ten months prior to this, nothing happened, no comments. So this resolution was generated. And again, serving the people of Hasslet, the council looked at the petition, nothing is happening at Fort Worth. Oh, we need to send them a formal resolution. And so they did, asking for a four-lane undivided, I actually call it five lanes undivided, in 35 miles an hour. We live here. And that's, if you scroll down to the second page, that was passed by the council unanimously, signed, and sent to Tech Dot. Next item. Next item. We got a request from Heritage Baptist Church with regard to Heritage Christian Academy. They have K through 12 there. They are requesting a school zone speed reduction in front of their school, because they come off that bridge, headed southbound, and it is, there's their entry into their school. Yes, there's been accidents there. But this is a requirement from Tax Dot, that anybody wants a school zone, the board of directors, or school board, has to write a letter to the municipality requesting this much. And so this was sent to the city. Next item. Again, in 2024, a scavengement, a 20 mile-per-hour reduced school zone along FM 156 was requested for Heritage Christian Academy, and that was sent to Tax Dot. And, girl, scroll down. And that was sent March 18th, 2024, actually, probably March 19th, 2024, and nothing happened. Though, in Tax Dot criteria states, they should act post haste, but nothing happened. So, next item. All right, in the Tax Dot, it states, well, formal speeds zones studies have to be generated. So, we hired professional traffic engineers to do such as that. And what they came up with is legitimately recommending, and which the study showed, and they generated strip maps, that's the term, that's the way Tax Dot looks at this stuff, is strip maps, and identifying, well, your 45 mile-an-hour should be reduced to 35 miles an hour between, I call it Hurley Street and Blue Mountain Road. And from Blue Mountain Road to your southern city limits should be reduced from 55 miles an hour to 45 miles an hour. And, oh, by the way, we have 20 times the truck traffic on FM, I'm talking about semi-truck traffic on FM 156, 20 times than any other conventional roadway in the state of Texas, a farm-to-market road. It's abnormally high. Why? Because where we sit. We sit on one of the world's top inland ports. That's where we are. But that's not a reason to use our only one north-south corridor that runs in front of our homes as an industrial thruway. That's what I-35 is for. And all we're doing is advocating for the citizens of Hazlet, Texas. They generated, the citizens generated the petitions, and we submitted them, and we're acting and working on their behalf. So, next item. Or did I run out of items yet? That was the final one. So, I have meetings set up. It is, I think, October 10th, or maybe 11th, to address these items. Now, we've requested to address these items multiple times. I have emails to prove this. I keep all my communications on this, and I still get no reaction, no action. I'm not throwing people under the bus, I understand they're shorthanded, but why, that goes back to that previous resolution that had all the teeth in it. It was documented for a reason, because I knew nothing would happen. This is the background of it. Excuse me, when I finish my presentation, I'll turn it over.
Okay, I'm sorry that you were finished.
So, again, we were working for the people of Hazlet, Texas. That's whom you serve. That's who you serve. And just please, I wanted, and probably all of you, none of you have seen this, other than Councilwoman Morrow.
I have it all printed out.
Yeah, you were there. And you voted in favor of that resolution.
Actually, I voted for the 45 miles an hour. I'm looking back at the minutes, I voted for to amend the motion.
The 45 mile an hour.
Yeah, I didn't vote for the 35.
Yeah, from down, 45 down to 35, and 55 down to 45. Yes, absolutely. So, I wanted to go through that so that you understand, as councilpeople today, what you want to withdraw, and that's this.
Mayor Halsey, may I speak on my agenda item now?
Yes.
Well, thank you for that explanation of everything, sir, and a couple of questions I have in regard to that. You know, it kind of reminds me similar to the school crossing guard situation, where you, you know, liked to claim credit for bringing that up, when I believe it was Councilman Carruthers who did it, and you said that you were working on it since February, and yet school started, and we were still a month-plus into the school year before we actually had crossing guards. So, in essence, with this one, I bring up the same parallel, in the fact that, in this instance, you know, this was done in 2022, where you said you, resoundingly, the community wanted four lanes, which is technically five lanes, with the turn lane in the middle, as you eloquently put on the graphic, but yet, however, in the three years since, nothing has been done, sir. And in my own personal regard, so I clarify that to you, and just so you know, I made it very clear to everyone I spoke with, I reached out to Tax Dot, and I asked them what the holdup was on 156, and why were we not getting 156 expanded beyond the two lanes it is currently? And, you know, in the mass of information that I was given, and the education that they brought me up to speed on, you know, one of the main stalling points for Tax Dot in this instance was the fact that this resolution was passed, and it was causing a problem with what they truly had planned. So, for us to get 156 expanded, and if you think about it, you've had three years now, plus, through three, almost three and a half years, to get 156 expanded, and yet, there's not even a single plan in place with Tax Dot, and you've done nothing for this city when it takes almost 45 minutes to drive two miles down 156. And so for all the true citizens, who are truly upset with driving 156, and who aren't here on their own accord, but are here because they have an issue with the way that 156 is such a bottleneck right now, sir, it's kind of disappointing that apparently you've been working on this for three years now, and we still don't even have any movement, or plan in place, or plan of action, or anything, sir. I mean, this is the whole point of calling this resolution to recall this, because after speaking with Tax Dot, they said that they would be more than willing to open a line of dialogue with you and the city, once they're able to move forward with this, whereas this resolution puts too many cogs in the wheel for their grander plan of things, of how things truly need to flow, because as you eloquently put, we are next to one of the biggest inland hubs in the entire country. And one of the double-edged sword to an inland hub the size of Intermodal is, it would be great to be able to funnel everything to I-35, which I think that's the whole point of Intermodal and the 170 flyover, and all the other things that are going to alleviate a lot of this. However, with the mass amount of actual residents that are currently in the city that drive that, not counting the 18-wheelers, just the citizen traffic that try to go, me and myself that live in Caraway, to take my sons to baseball practice at the firehouse fields, which is less than two-mile drive, takes me almost 30 to 45 minutes every day to take my boys to practice. And yes, I have a very personal problem with 156 being two lanes right now. It needs to be expanded. It is well beyond should have been expanded a while ago. There's a reason that just south of the city limits, Fort Worth has already brought it up to four lanes, and north of our city limits, they've already brought it up to the four lanes, but yet, however, in only Hazlet proper, we are sitting here with our two little lanes sitting in traffic on a daily basis that is wasting so many citizens' times that's very valuable. So, after my own personal conversations with Tax Dot, and as a way to unclog a bottleneck, if we can get this resolution removed, and we open a new set of dialogue with Tax Dot, which nothing from this resolution being moved will bind or tie the city to anything, tied to a six-lane of anything, this is only removing the restrictions that you so eloquently with teeth put onto Tax Dot and our other partners who are trying to help us. Because as much as we would like to keep Hazlet, the beautiful quaint city it was, when we are next to one of the biggest inland ports in the country, that is not an option. But what is an option, is us as leadership, is to stand up and do something for our citizens, which would be to get 156 expanded, and to be able to relieve the bottleneck of traffic on all the avenues that we have. So this right here, just as the 170 resolution, is just the first step to move this city forward to the current future of where everybody else is, you know, operating. We are behind the eight ball, and we need to get this city back currently. You continually say our sense of urgency. Well, if you all knew the information that we have, and how far behind the eight ball this city truly is, to give you some perspective, 15 years ago, Keller, Roanoke, Trophy Club, and Hazlet were at the same economic development. What is three of those cities doing, and one of them not? Three of those cities have massive growth, tax revenue to boot, amenities for their citizens, and roads that flow freely. Hazlet needs to get up with the current situation, which, when you have as many homes as we currently do, you cannot keep the quaint little rural town that Hazlet used to be 15 years ago. That is not what Hazlet is. It's not a thing that I say with joy or pride. I'm just telling you that with, based on what we have in our community, from a population, a demographic, and a traffic problem, if we as this council sit back and continue to kick the can down the road, and continue to push something along, and, in your words, move with too much urgency, which in the business world, that means you're getting things done, in the political world, that means you're being a politician. Well, excuse me if I don't consider myself a politician. We need to make things better for our citizens. 156 is a disaster. Speaking to Tax Dot directly, myself, they have zero plans with the current resolutions in place to make 156 wider for our citizens. So as a leader of this community, in my own personal perspective, it is, without any kind of other explanation, the only way we should move as leadership of this city, relieve the traffic, relieve the congestion, give the citizens what they need, which is to be able to get home to their families after a long day of work a lot quicker versus sitting in traffic wasting gas. So, if you would like any other questions or things, that is my presentation on my agenda item that I called, and I thank you for yours as well, because there was some great information that we had. However, there were some holes that I wanted to make sure I filled in with there. So with the current ability, sir, is there any reason why in the three years, we have zero movement on that getting expanded, when with what you said that this resolution did for our city, in the eyes of Tax Dot, was to provide that technically five-lane road, four lanes with a turn lane in the middle? Why do we not have any movement? Why is there nothing going done? Why are we sitting here with no crossing guards, a month into the school year? Just a question.
Well, I'm glad you're here to help us through this. There's two questions there. Why hasn't anything happened on FM 156? And the crossing guards, they're all there. They started last Thursday. It's all happened so very quickly that
School started in August, sir.
We haven't had time to put it on the website to announce it, but the crossing guards are in all five locations. Now, with regard to FM 156, there are lots of other topics and background, you know, and it's not just Tax Dot, there's industry involved, what they want, there's cog involved, what they want, and/or advise, and, but there is the citizens of Hazlet, Texas, who live here, who say, here's what we want. Now, Tax Dot will go gamebusters if it's what Tax Dot wants to do. Tax Dot wants to do six-lane divided. It'll be nine lanes wide at our intersections. Nine lanes wide, that's what the schematic design calls for. And every one up and down, it requires Tax Dot to do condemnation up and down 156, so people along Ashmore Farms, you're going to be into their backyards with this road.
Mayor Halsey?
Excuse me.
Well, I didn't get to answer my question.
Excuse me, let me finish, and I'll take your question. And so, there's more, it, so really, the discussion, I think, as you probably alluded to, Tax Dot is ready to go if they can do what they want to do, not what the citizens of Hazlet, Texas, want to do. But guess what? Hazlet, Texas, they have to get approval from Hazlet, Texas, and we are governed, we are, we honor what our people say they want. And you have all these petitions, all these signatures, you know, sometimes you're excited to get 10, 20, 30 people, that's a big deal to come up here and make a public meeting. Try getting over 600 signatures in two days' time, two different meetings. That's how excited and emphatic about what they wanted. They wanted that boulevard design, and it supports all the traffic flow they project. So, why? That needs to be laid at the feet of Tax Dot. And then that goes up to the Transportation Commission. There are many more entities involved in that question. And is it what industry wants to do? Industry's, that's big money you're talking about. And to, how does that get incorporated? Well, the transportation, Tax Dot to the Transportation Committee, why has roadways been done north and south? Tax Dot hasn't seen the need to put it on the 10-year plan. If it was on the 10-year plan, six lanes or four lanes, it'd be on the 10-year plan, but they don't see an urgency for it. It's Tax Dot that does not see the urgency. Hazlet, Texas, has been in the lead, wanting discussion, and for months on end, years on end, is Hazlet would reach out with no response from Tax Dot, Fort Worth District. I got to make that very specific. It is a group of people. And there are changes that are happening. They've had some big problems. People don't want to hear that. I'm not throwing them under the bus, but companies have those issues, and this was one of them, and the consequence, and I'm sure that Hazlet, Texas, wasn't the only one that was let down. There are others. In fact, every municipality in the Fort Worth District, and every industry, every business that has tried to get a dang driveway, has had high levels of difficulty in response with the Fort Worth District. And so that is why nothing's happened. It's not because of Hazlet, Texas, and these traffic engineers, and city engineers, and other members trying to communicate with Tax Dot, they just went silent. It takes two. They went silent. So, nonetheless, I will turn this over to you, as for your discussion, and possible motion and
May I speak now? Mayor Halsey?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, a couple of comments. One, you keep going back to the petition, which, it was only, it was not only, it was a percentage, but it was 19% of Hazlet residents, so it wasn't, you know, 80%, 90%. We had 1,803 registered voters in 2021, and 19% took the time to share, and I appreciate that, for the four lanes. The 35 mile-an-hour was only 16%. So it is a small, I like to make decisions, I've said this numerous times, for the majority of the citizens, not the minority. The second thing is, I had a question written down of who are you meeting with, October 10th or 11th?
The transportation
But who specifically, which person?
The Fort Worth District
But what gentleman, or lady?
Engineer. His name is David Salazar.
David Salazar, thank you.
You don't get any more senior than David Salazar.
Any more senior than David Salazar.
Any more senior.
And then, I'm looking at
Excuse me, you don't get any more senior than David Salazar in the Fort Worth District.
Three times. Okay, and I also, I'm looking at the 156, 2018, when they were talking about proposed improvements and considerations, they had a six-lane urban section with a raised curb, as well as a four-lane urban section with a raised curb. So I don't, I know that the schematics we had don't reflect that, but that was their original conversation, as well as the right-of-way, you were, I guess, scaring, excuse me? I'm sorry.
I'm listening.
Okay, as well as the right-of- As well as the right-of-way, I know you had mentioned, like, everybody's going to, I guess, get their house condemned, but it says here 120 is, would be existing on some of their alternates, alternative one and two and three, possibly up to 180 of feet of right-of-way. So this is the information I have, and I personally am not for six, I'm for four, but I'm not, this is the first step to get, but it's not about me. Once again, it's not about me, it's about the citizens, and every single person I talk to complains about 156 and getting home.
Yes.
And so we need, this is the first step to do something, to get us back on their, their, I don't know.
This puts them, let me say this, this puts them back on the seven lane.
Well, the middle lane doesn't count.
Six lanes, well, it does.
It doesn't count on
It's called seven lane divided.
But, oh, divided.
Yes.
There's no seven lane divided.
That defines that seventh lane is the divider.
No, it's, it says four
So the, the
Four-lane urban section with a raised curb center median.
Okay, now, let me, let me, okay. What you referenced is that they had four lanes, then they have six lanes.
Both with the curb center median.
They did have four lanes up to a point, then they changed it to six.
Okay, so that, if this
So the six-lane, 60% schematic that we put on the website almost four years ago, and what this original town hall meeting was about, where all of the signatures were collected, was on the 60% schematic Tech Dot offered up, and there was no option on four.
So if taking this resolution back, rescinding it, gets the conversation starting again so that 156 can be back on the docket?
It puts six lanes back on the docket.
It puts 156 expansion back on it.
It puts six lanes
Nothing gets approved without the council's approval.
Yeah, I don't think we'd have to, I mean, we would approve that.
The council approves anything. They can't do anything without our approval. So don't scaremonger the, the
Well, I'm not.
Citizens. You are scaremongering them. You, you go to the worst possible scenario of every situation that we go to, because it's a sense of power for you, sir, and that's not okay. This is only opening the conversation, because in three years since your resolution, zero has been done for our citizens to get 156 expanded. Zero. This opens the conversation. Tech Dot cannot approve anything without this council say so. They cannot put anything on the city of Hazlet without this council say so. So stop fearmongering the citizens. This is only a step to open the conversation and dialogue to get 156 expanded. And that's it, sir. That's it.
Oh, thank you. I was confused. We can open the dialogue if we do what Tech Dot wants, which is six lanes. That's the short of the story. So it is to you, counsel?
Mayor Halsey, I'd like to make a motion.
Wait, do we, oh, are there people, oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I preempted here. Well, it's, there are signed up speakers here and others. Please go ahead. So is there, there are people who have signed up to speak on this item?
I have speakers present and I have written requests.
Okay, well, if we could have those in person first?
Yes. Mike Rhodes?
Mr. Rhodes.
Thank you, I'll be right back.
But name an address for the record, please.
211 Hesel. You know, it's, when, when the discussion about, I mean, 156 is a disaster, Blue Mound is a disaster, and I live on 156, so I have to come out. Thank goodness y'all have done the European, you know, please don't stop in front of our entrance or easement. I mean, the people who live here are giving you their opinion. You're choosing to say it's a power trip, well, you confronting him about his powers, I mean, you're doing the same thing. And it's just, listen, it is a disaster. We don't want six lanes. You have two lanes going each way up north of 114. You have two lanes going south of 287. So why would we want six lanes plus a middle turn lane, plus turn lanes at the intersection? Why would we want to facilitate and create Texas Motor Speedway through Hazlet? It just defies what we are confronted with on a daily basis. And you likewise, you've contacted Tech Dot, I appreciate that. How about getting Tech Dot to come and have, and meet with us? You're not supposed to be meeting with them on your own again.
I mean, you're
If, if I have to file, and you can shake your head, I can file up, open meetings, act, claim against both of you. You've openly admitted to what you're doing outside of the scope of your job. Listen to the, to us. I mean, I've lived here longer than you have.
You have no freaking clue
What Blue Mound used to look like or what 156.
I mean, Tanya's lived here longer than
I have. Gary lives on 156. I don't know where you guys live. I know where you live, Doug. But it's like common sense, cool heads, stop the blame game, do the dang job, work I mean, it's not that we're not, I mean, when you're trying to get somebody to come to the table, it's like dealing with Hamas. Just create a new country. That's what you're saying, basically. Go ahead and give in. It's, we need something done, we need, I mean, four lanes minimum with a turn lane?
Is what we need.
Turn lanes, I mean, the discussion you had last week, coordinating the signals would help, having turn lanes on every, going Blue Mound West, Blue Mound East, having a flashing light. Those are things that we need to do minimally, like you discussed the other day. But simply deciding, well, we're just gonna, we don't like the resolution because 18%. Well, guess what? 18% will vote, more so. And you know what that represents. You were represented, you were voted in with less than 200-ish votes. There's more than that that signed that petition. We just want you to do what's right for the citizens. You know, it's, it's disheartening to watch. And I don't, you know, personal awareness, I do a lot of training all over the world about being personally aware of how you come across to people. It's very disappointing. It's very disappointing. We all can do better.
Let's do better.
Let's put it behind, let's work together, let's get a plan and move forward. Okay?
Thank you, Mr. Rhodes. Our next speaker, please.
Brian Flaxpart.
Mr. Flaxpart.
All right, tell back to follow, I'll go in a slightly different direction. I think your time has passed for looking for the ideal solution. I think you're going to have to take something from Tech Dot because it's getting untenable here. I agree completely with your comments about those roads suck. From a quality of life perspective, that's the biggest impediment to my quality of life here. That's the single biggest thing. I think that's a resounding, everybody's going to echo that. I feel like I'm a prisoner in my home. I have to schedule time. I have to leave early in the morning. I have to schedule when I come home, otherwise I spend a long time coming up 156. I have to schedule when I go to the post office to check my mail. That frustrates me. You talk about trucks and finding a way to block trucks. I, I've seen the signage on Blue Mound going east that says no trucks, and I've seen plenty of trucks turning there. There's no impediment to stopping them there. Again, I think you need to take a deal from Tech Dot and move on. I don't think we can afford to take another several years to, to get motion and get agreement on them, from them. So if, if we've got something on the table that gets us to six lanes, which is more than the ideal of four, that I think everybody's going to agree with, but it happens now instead of six years from now, I'm all over that. Thanks, appreciate your time.
Thank you. Do we have another speaker?
Joette Keen.
Ms. Keen? Name an address, please.
Joette Keen, 1410 Poppy Drive. I just want to make a comment because, you know, I listened to Mr. Rhodes speak, and I worked in industry for over 42 years, and one of the things that I was trained on was what they called micro, like watching people's expressions and watch how they behave and, and taking cues from that. So I sit in the audience and, and I watch, and you're very disrespectful, and it's very obvious.
Would you hold the mic up?
I said, and Councilmember Watkins is very disrespectful, and his body language speaks volumes to people in the audience. And I'm sorry to have to call that out, but I've watched this for months, and it's really disturbing as a citizen, and it makes me sad that you sit there and represent this city. And that's just my comment aside from this topic. And I hate to do that. I, too, live in a neighborhood off of 156. I worry about a couple things selfishly. I worry about the value of my home when six lanes goes outside of my neighborhood. I was part of the group, not only did we sit in two days of meetings to get citizens' feedback, and we talked to people to find out what they wanted, what percentage that was, Councilmember Morrow, people had an opportunity to come up and talk, and that's what I advocate for. If you've ever heard me, you know that my biggest deal is I want to hear what people want. That's really important to me. Councilmember Carruthers may remember, I actually went door to door in our neighborhood. I, I think I met you when I came around, trying to see what people wanted for that petition. That's how much I want to hear what people have to say, because I really, really believe that in my heart, that it's important to do the right things for people. I think six lanes is very dangerous. I saw your wonderful comment about our, our crossing guards, and that safety is our number one concern. And I think six lanes makes it very unsafe for people who live along 156, for people who have to get out under 156, whether that's from businesses or from residential areas or neighborhoods. And I'm fortunate, I'm retired, so I can pick the time of day when I drive, but I do appreciate how difficult it is for people who work and have to sit in that traffic, because it isn't pleasant. And so something has to be done. But why did Tech Not, Tech Dot, I ask, think about this. Why did Tech Dot not build four more, four lanes when they built it south and they built it north? Why? Because they had a very, very different objective for the roadway warehouses to get to 287 quickly. That was Tech Dot's objective, and that, my friends, has not changed. It's an alternative to whatever happens on those other roadways. You think we won't see trucks on that road? I think we're kidding ourselves. And why would this resolution actually prevent, and I use that term carefully, prevent Tech Dot from speaking or responding to, to Hazlet? Why? Why would it prevent them from doing that? The only reason it would prevent them from doing it is because the longer they delay, think about what we're all talking about here, the longer they delay, the greater the pain gets, and the greater likelihood that we will say, what this gentleman said, just forget it, it's so bad, do what you want. So we're not preventing them. They're playing a strategic game with us. I firmly believe that. And I fear that if you remove this resolution, and even though you're saying you can control it, will you really? Will you really control it? So be very careful by removing something that's putting Tech Dot's feet to the fire and saying, listen, we want to work with you, we know we need improvement, this is what we want, and let's open that dialogue and make it happen. You all have the power to make that happen, and I really hope you listen. And I'm going to ask this final question, and I really love an honest answer, and I know I don't, I can't get that, but I really like an honest answer. Did you all discuss this and have your opinions shared with one another before this meeting? I think that's everything I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Keen. Do we have any other speakers in the audience?
Yes, Patricia Parker.
Name an address, please.
Patricia Parker, 219 Broadmoor. First, I want to ask the council, how many of you live directly off of 156? And I mean directly as in your front yard or your backyard backing up to 156? None of you, correct? So what gives you the right to say expanding 156 into six lanes would actually be beneficial for the citizens? Have you thought about the negative impact this would have on all the homes, the neighborhoods along 156? Have you thought about the safety of the residents of 156? As it is now, and I have witnesses very many times, the school buses have a hard time with the people on 156, dropping off and picking up the children, because the people that drive 156 are not abiding by the laws. They are going around the school buses as they're trying to pick up and drop off the kids. These are your residents, your citizens of Hazlet's children. Ms. Keen brought up the group that was part of the petitions. I was one of them. I sat through the town hall meetings that Mayor Halsey had. We hardly approached anybody. They came to us, they came to our tables after seeing the schematic designs that we had out, Mayor Halsey had out, and they were all more than willing to sign those petitions. 674 people signed the four-lane petitions. And on October, well, let me back up. Mr. Horak, you were one of them who signed the petition. And October 17, 2022, the council unanimously voted to oppose Tech Dot's schematic design to expand 156 to six lanes. And Mr. Gilbert, I guess you didn't listen to the COG representative when he was talking to you about 156. Regarding the 35 speed limit, again, petitions were signed. Again, I was part of that group. Not only were we at the town hall meetings, we walked the neighborhoods in the freezing cold and talked to our people in our subdivisions, every single door. And again, with the 35, 501 signatures, and again, Mr. Horak, you were again one of them.
Thank you for doing that.
And October, again, of 2022, it was voted unanimously. We don't want this resolution recalled. I understand that this does not bind Tech Dot in any manner, but recalling this resolution will give Tech Dot an oppression that has, might be in favor of the six lanes. So if you vote for favor of changing this, you'll be going against the residents' desire. The residents that you're supposed to be representing, the residents that voted for you and placed their trust in you, please consider all that.
Thank you, Ms. Parker. Do we have another speaker?
The others that I have are all written.
Please go ahead. First off, is there anybody online wishing to speak? All right, please go ahead with the written comments. To this item only.
Yes. This is Cynthia Fanning.
This is Cynthia Fanning, continuation of her letter on the previous item. Not in favor of the changes to the speed limits and lanes on FM 156 from Blue Mound. I reside in Brentwood Estates, 109 Cedar Lane, and think other options should be considered. A four-way stoplight in the area of Brentwood slash 156 would be suitable, in my opinion. Thank you.
Now, I don't end that opposed to four lanes or six. Okay, that's the whole point of these is so we can understand.
Yeah, she said speed limits and lanes. She didn't specify four or six in her letter.
And what about the speed limits?
She didn't, she's not in favor of changing speed limits or the lanes on FM 156 from Blue Mound. She thinks other options should be considered. A four-way stoplight in the area of Brentwood 156 would be suitable.
Very good. All right, next.
The next one is Joel Bullard, additional comments from his previous item. I also oppose FM 156 being turned into a six-lane divided highway. This has already been presented to the citizens and we shot it down. Joel Bullard, 108 Hurley Street. This is from Carl in Trinity, Manos. This is a continuation of their letter on a previous item. We also oppose the proposed six-lane highway project which would destroy Hazlet's character, compromise safety, and diminish quality of life.
Is that all the comments?
That's all that I had.
All right, council, then it's to you. And I hope you listen to what your citizenry is saying, the people that you're working for.
Yeah, Mayor, I've got a comment.
The, so I turn it over to you. And Councilman Horak, you were saying?
Thank you. Now, I appreciate Ms. Parker doing homework and looking at petitions because I did sign. I did go to Heritage Baptist Church when that was going around because that is some very significant pieces of what we need. I don't own a home that fronts 156. I live on Odessa Drive that we have to exit right after the hill coming down by the Texco Station. And it scares the living daylights out of my wife to make a left turn across that road as it is now. There's no doubt about that. I turned my blinker on on top of the hill to let people know I'm going to turn at the bottom because it's not safe. It's not a safe road. If it takes Councilman Watkins to go on his own and talk to Tech Dot simply from his opinion viewpoint with Tech Dot and it gets conversation going, because we need conversation with Tech Dot and with COGS to make this road happen because it's not, it's not just the Tech Dot. This is a regional transportation issue that's going to take COG support, I think, to move this along. And gentlemen can verify that. We do need, you know, we do need to slow our speed limits. I've said since I've lived here, you know, it's, if you're coming north on 156, it's 55 miles an hour through the stoplight at Blue Mound. And I've always thought that's stupid, you know, because the idea should be set it at 45 before the stoplight so cars are starting to slow down as you head into a stoplight, not try to race through and get to the 45 mile an hour speed limit. Those speed limits are critical going through our town. It's just, you know, and it's 45 in spots and 35 down the others. I went to the hotel when Tech Dot had the proposal out there. And I know the majority of the people from Hazlet Park, when they saw what was presented, you know, it scared the daylights out of them because it basically shut our addition down. One Road Schreiber was the only road that you could go out and actually turn southbound on. Berry and Odessa, you could only go north. And you talked about really restricting a neighborhood. That did us in. So I don't think the resolutions are, you know, binding, but I think we need something out there to at least express our concerns on what we see as viable. I don't think there's anybody in this room, online or view this later, that's satisfied with the condition of 156. Something has got to be done. That's, that's the way it is. We need these talks to move. We need them to move faster. And this is where, you know, this is where I'd ask the mayor, we had a very good meeting this last Wednesday, talked about road projects. That's the sort of meetings we need, you know, more often to keep us surprised on where are we at with especially strategic roads. Strategic 170 Blue Mound and 156. I think those are strategic. Some of the other, we talked about road failures and additions. If you're in a neighbor that the roads fell in front of your home, well, that's strategic. But I think as a whole, we just need more information, I think, on a timely basis rather going kind of years on where are we at with road projects. And, you know, if we need COGS, you know, if gentleman's willing to come up more often and help present things, that's, you have an open invitation, we can get you on an agenda given, I think, 10 days notice. So let's keep this in front of folks so we can get a solution that fits us all. Thanks very much.
Mr. Mayor? Well put, Mr. Horak. And the communication line has always been open with Tech Dot. And COG knows this too because they got to deal with Tech Dot Fort Worth District and have the same frustrations. Many entities share that frustration. Am I landed at the feet of Tech Dot Fort Worth District? You're absolutely right, I am. They have a responsibility and they have not fulfilled it. And we have multiple projects as well as other entities, other cities all around us. Now, yes, sir?
Mr. Mayor, just from my perspective, I live in the meadow and every day I have to make a blind left through traffic, can't see the other people coming. And I just keep holding my breath worried that somebody in my neighborhood or myself with my children in my truck going to a meeting or taking my kids to sports is going to get broadsided by somebody coming north. The lines, I know, Mr. Mike, you said that you're glad for the lines on the road, but I, I see people every day not even paying attention to those lines. They don't stop. They don't, they don't leave a gap. And I'm honking at people trying to get out of my neighborhood. I too, as this other gentleman said, have to schedule half of my drives just because of the traffic. Something has to be done. We've got to get off center somewhere. And if the conversation isn't happening now, then we need to do something to make it happen. I did really appreciate what you did Wednesday night, all of the information that we got, but I was curious why, out of all the road projects that you presented, there was not one thing on the agenda about 156, which is one of the most important roads in Hazlet, until a citizen asked about it. So I was, I was kind of surprised by that. But something has to be done and should have been done years and years and years ago. I just think that if this is what it takes to get it off center and get the conversation restarted, then I'm for it.
I appreciate that and I share your concerns. And for many, many years, you know, we've been in, this administration's been in place for four years, little over four years and a couple of months. And so there's many years prior to that that this need existed. Within this four years, you know, with the projects that I'll say this mayor championed, we've helped relieve a lot of the semi-traffic off of 156. Now it goes down intermodal to Hazlet Parkway. That was a direct reflect of the mayor's involvement in this. Now, why wasn't it on the previous, all those projects are city-funded projects? And there is nothing keeping Tech Dot from being, wanting to engage or have conversation or put anything on a 10-year plan. And I can promise you, this won't change a thing with Tech Dot.
Mayor Halsey?
Excuse me, just a minute. And that resolution, pulling that is, I don't think it's the way to go. It's House of Texas, the city councils, people, the citizens themselves created this petition. They submitted it to the city. It's per the local government code, how that process went. And then the city council eventually, almost a year later, sent a resolution. Tech Dot, you're not doing anything. Here, we're going to send you a resolution. This is what we don't want. Here's what we desire. Here's the speed limit. Here's the type of style. But Tech Dot is Fort Worth District. I'm being very explicit. It's the Fort Worth District. And there are many other entities out there that would love to speak out, but they fear they're not going to get anything. Well, they're not getting anything today. And laying it just where it lies. Now, who wanted to speak? Councilmember Morrow?
Yes, you mentioned at the meeting Wednesday that all the projects were, what did you call them?
They're city-funded type projects.
The bridge construction isn't city-funded, the small bridge?
Well, Hazlet Parkway was a city-funded project, but the bridge itself, no.
Okay, so they're not, they weren't city-funded, they're not all city-funded? My point is you've made an incorrect statement.
Oh, I made an incorrect statement. With regard to the bridge, no, that would not be city-funded.
Okay, I just want to make sure.
You're correct. That would be either RTC funds, which is federal funds. They're redirecting federal funds for the short bridge. And the other option was the recommended option that a number of other entities are excited about would be funded by the state. And RTC, if they were to agree. So that's where those funds would come from. And your next, and that answer your question?
Well, the question was why 156 wasn't put on the workshop?
Say it again.
The question was asked why 156 wasn't put on the workshop? And your answer was that all of the projects were city-funded. And then that was my question. The bridge wasn't city-funded and 156 would also not be city-funded. That would be paid for as well.
Okay.
So I just wanted to make that connection.
I should have answered in the way that FM 156 is solely state-funded. It is a owned system highway.
No cost to citizens.
That municipality does not fund. I should have answered in a different way.
Mr. Halsey?
Who was that? Oh, yes, sir.
When did we, when did we do this petition? When was the, when was the roll call on that? When was that taken? 2020, okay. I moved here in January of 2022, so I wasn't here. But if I was here, I would have signed, signed the four lanes. I am 1,000% against the six lanes. I think four lanes is wide enough. I think where we're at right now at two is beyond terrible. I think four lanes would be a great idea and I would fully support that 1,000% and totally against the six lanes that has been designed by Tech Dot. I agree with what Ms. Keen said a while ago that if this passes tonight, that we can go and try to meet with Tech Dot. And our representative from NT COG is here tonight. He said he's very willing to work with us and come speak with us and give us updates. But I think this is something that we need to push on the door with Tech Dot and whoever else every month and not wait for them to come back to us. There's organizations and things and I think in life where you can't wait for people to come to you, you've got to be very diligent and go after them every month and say, hey, we want four lanes, start us a design and let's get going. I think that this needs to be pushed every month and try to get ahold of them. I know you've, you've said you've, you know, been waiting on them to give us a call and the phone's open. But if passing this tonight, not saying that this is not saying, because it says right here in section three, city council was strong opposed to the six lanes. So I, I know I am fully against the six lanes and I have always been and always will be. And I think if this passes, then this can hopefully open the door for us to go back to them and keep pushing the four lanes and get the design done. I didn't, I've never seen this, your presentation that you did earlier. I guess I have a question about why the Heritage Baptist Church, if they offered to have a school zone done a couple of years ago, why has that, we don't currently have a school zone there, correct?
Correct.
If that was done a couple of years ago, if they offered that or recommended that, how come that has not been done? I know, I don't know if we're waiting for Tech Dot or what, but that's a very dangerous when people are coming off the hill, when people are going north. I think if the Baptist Church has offered to, can we get a school zone? Why have we waited a couple of years for that? I think that should be something of top priority for these children that are crossing the street, going to school from our neighborhood in Hazlet Park, or if they're driving in, whatever. I think that needs to have a school zone. And I'm, another thing, I am for lowering the speed limit from 55 to 45 or whatever's been talked. And I think that going through our Old Town area needs to be 35. You go through so many cities where it's 55 and then once you get to closer to, into town, it goes from 55 to 35. And I think that's a good idea. So I think that I am for lowering the speed limit on 156 also.
Well, it's, well, very good. And so you asked several questions there, you know, waiting, Hazlet waiting for Tech Dot to call. I would ask anybody out there, please send in an open records request of the mayor and staff's communication with Tech Dot and we'll send you all the emails and the text messages and the phone calls we've made to Tech Dot, but nothing coming back. It's there, just request it. And it will prove the point. We haven't been sitting. We have not been waiting for the phone to ring. We've been pushing.
When's the last time that we've contacted Tech Dot? Was it this last month? I mean, have we contacted them?
Two weeks ago. A week ago.
So what are they, are they not interested, do they not answer the phone call?
They don't, most of the time they do not reply.
Well, clearly they did. Your meeting with them in October.
But most of the time they do not reply. If you ask, or anybody out there will ask for an open record request of all my emails to Tech Dot, and any of their replies, it'll show proof what's happened.
I think if this passes tonight, I don't want this going to the public to think that this, we are all for six lanes. Because I know that is what's been portrayed tonight, that the city council is all for six lanes. Because I don't think that's true. I think if you went up here and asked us individually, we wouldn't be. But I think that's being portrayed that and I, I just, I don't, I don't.
Well, everything you expressed that you wanted is what was expressed in the resolution and sent to Tech Dot.
Right, I'm saying that we need to bring this, get going with Tech Dot. I just.
Would you bring up this PDF, please?
Mayor Halsey?
And I'm going to read the PDF here. I don't, I'm trying to find my hard copy and I can't. Anyway, okay, this is a resolution, no, that's the old resolution. What is the proposed resolution? Do you have the proposed resolution?
Sir, we discussed this before the meeting and I told you already, there is no proposed resolution. This is simply recalling the current resolution.
And what does that do?
That recalls the current resolution. It recalls it from what it was. It is no longer in effect.
Why?
Sir, can you control the meeting?
Order, please.
I am controlling.
Mayor Halsey, I'd like to make a motion.
Make a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution XXX-2025 to recall Resolution 012-2022.
A motion is made to approve a resolution or recalling resolution number? Is there a second? Is there a second?
I'll second.
I'll second.
There is a second. Any discussion? Any discussion? All in favor? One, two, three, four. All opposed? One opposed, motion passes. Thank you, council.
I, I thought to clarify, what mean, what?
It's, it's, I think it was clarified, they, the public received the message. Fear reminders.
I have orders, sir.
And so it, no for executive session, no need for that, no need for item five action out of executive session. Future agenda items, does anybody have a future agenda item? You know, here soon you'll have another meeting. And items are on that. All right, then scroll down to the bottom of the agenda. Scroll down to the bottom, please. Adjourn, may I have a motion?
Mayor Halsey, make a motion to adjourn.
Motion is made to adjourn. Is there a second? Is there a second?
Mayor, I'll second that.
There is a second. All in favor to adjourn? Over here? It's unanimous. Close this meeting at, adjourn this meeting at 10:10 PM. Thank you all for coming. Thank you, council.